Good morning, everybody, and welcome. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, May 30th, 2023 workshop of the Lake County School Board. Sorry for the delay. If you're watching at home, we had some technical difficulties, but we are ready to go. And we'll start this morning with the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please rise for that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a very exciting meeting this morning with some topics that I think are probably probably the most important ones to just about many students out there. But I don't have any public input cards, and I guess we'll get the show started this morning with 3.01, which Superintendent, I think that's one of your committees.
It is, and I can tell you, this was certainly a joint effort, and I'm so pleased today to have some of our teacher leaders with us alongside our amazing curriculum, instruction, assessment, and other staff members here today that are going to be talking about the work that was done by our teacher advisory groups and in collaboration with Kathy Smith and Elizabeth, who have been a big part of the work along the way. And so I see Amy ready to take over this morning, so welcome.
I am. Good morning, Chairman Dodd, Superintendent Carnegie, board members. I am here today along with members of the executive cabinet and the superintendent's teacher advisory committee to present the work the committees did this year. We also have Melissa Lyfer that's going to speak about the structured classroom. We have a slide presentation that will be coming up, I'm certain. The superintendent's teacher advisory committee. While he's getting that, I'm going to go ahead and start just talking about the work that we did. So the superintendent identified three areas of teacher interest that resulted in advisory groups for each of these areas. And then we worked collaboratively with Kathy Smith and Elizabeth Emery from LCEA to develop the committees. So an email was sent to all of our instructional staff with the criteria and asked for interested teachers to apply. From those applications, each school then selected from those that were that applied to determine who would represent them in the different meetings. And we had some committee members that actually represented their school on all three committees, so it was quite a dedicated group of people. Our grading and intervention committees met as separate committees, but their elementary group met and then their middle and high group met, and our discipline and pass group worked all together. And all of the groups were facilitated by members of the executive cabinet, so the superintendent could really focus on listening in and problem solving with the group. All right, next slide. Here you can see the dates that we met this year, and then as they continue the work into next year, I'm sure there'll be more dates. So we're going to start today, if you'll get to the next slide, with our best practices in grading, which was led by Mr. Feltner, Ms. Dudley, and their teacher committee member that's with them this morning is Vincent Montori.
That's always the down arrow, right? Well, good morning.
Morning.
All right. Another opportunity to talk about grading. So we're thrilled to be here as a team. I would like to definitely thank Mrs. Dudley and Mr. Montori for representing the grading committee and the work that we've kind of done collectively. So best practices in grading, we did focus on those dates that were mentioned. This is just a list, we're just going to kind of run through. We're going to establish a little bit of why, too, so there's going to be a little work that I need board members to participate collectively. This is just a committee that we had for the elementary group, so really would like to thank them for their work that they did with our team and just sharing the insight and taking it, really, they're the teacher leader back at the school, so it is kind of a heavy lift. And the same for the middle and high school group. Just making sure that they kind of are now, in no uncertain terms, kind of the expert, at least with limited knowledge about what we talked about and discussed, that they hopefully lead the work at their collective schools.
And your schools represented?
Yeah, we did have every school represented. This is just our proof of life slide. We did meet, right? We did meet. That is an example of that, meeting at Estitula with the elementary group, and then we met at Mount Dora High for the high school group, middle and high group, so. All right, so we're going to just break it down, kind of what we did day one, day two, day three, and then we kind of collectively summed it up through a Zoom with both the elementary and the middle and high group working together. Just make it, it was basically the feedback piece or our final product that you actually have in front of you right now. We definitely want to say that this is ongoing. This is not a one-year and done. I hope that through our understanding and building the why today, you maybe as a group will understand that grading is bigger than just a one-year commitment. I think over the last several years, we've tried to introduce some language into the student progression plan, and not all of this language is in the student progression plan. That's why it's a guideline. It's best practices that teachers, administrators, leaders, and for families that we can say, this is based on research, based on data. It is a best practice. It's a guide. It's not the, you know, end-all, and I know we have a lot of work to do when it comes to grading. So really, that first day was establishing the why. So I have a few sticky notes.
For you?
Absolutely.
Don't make me do this.
All right, so when we say establishing the why, the first thing I would like you to write down in your sticky note, and I'll give you like 30 seconds, would be, what does a grade represent? And this is the work that we did with the committee. So I'd like for you, as individuals, this is private, your own thoughts. What do grades represent? I'll know you finish when I see your pencil down. Or at least the movement stops, you don't have to put it down. So is there any brave soul that would like to share, what did you put down on your sticky? What do grades represent?
Sure.
Thank you for discarding you.
I think grades should represent an indication of what the student has mastered or learned.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What a student knows and is able to do at that time.
Okay. What they're able to do and know?
Performance on an assignment or in a course.
Okay. Performance?
On the mastery there, I gave the specificity that should apply toward a standard.
Toward a standard, right. And we've had lots of conversation, we would talk with teachers, it's about standards. So I really appreciate what you have written down. We sometimes hear it's effort. It's based on a behavior rather than maybe the learning. So that was something that we did try to establish. And really, if you, some of the experts will say beyond that, it's a feedback to students and to parents. Like, why do we, why would you receive a report card? Right? And sometimes it's to say, where does my son or daughter fit in the scheme of third grade or 10th grade? But also, it's that feedback piece that we give to parents to say, are they on track or not? So when you talk about grading, there isn't a class in college, maybe I'm wrong, Mrs. Luke, I don't, but there isn't really, when you come to like a educational course based on grading, we take a lot of how we were graded as individuals, as students, and how our best teachers, or maybe sometimes maybe the teachers that we didn't, choosing my word carefully, wasn't maybe my strongest or favorite teacher, I learned what not to do and what I learned to do. So I think that's, in the next exercise that I'd like for you guys to participate in, is really establishing that. When you think of 3,000 teachers, is it, grading is exceptionally emotional. And I get very passionate on one side, but I also have to understand that we have to step back, and people come from all different backgrounds and how they were traditionally graded, and we want to make sure that, what is best practice based on research? So I like when you guys say it's standards-based, it's based on what students know. And I think what we've really found through our committee is to find out that there's a lot of grades that go in the grade book that really doesn't reflect a learning, it reflects a behavior. So when we created the guideline, it was really to separate and establish the why. It was, how can we separate what the behaviors are to what students actually should learn and master at that specific moment in time? And when I say moment in time, I'm not saying what they should learn by Friday, I'm saying what should they learn over a course of third grade? This progression of the year, what should I learn? Or for this quarter, what is this unit that we should try to learn? If I don't, though, when can I relearn? So we talked a lot about, if the most important part of learning is learning, then we have to separate some of those behaviors. I think that's, if I'm really jumping ahead, that's that forward thinking, that this has to be ongoing work, is because we can't establish that in one year. So if you would, play along with me. I'm going to show you 10 grades, and I've done this activity probably 35 times now in probably 26 of our schools, and it's worked every time, so please.
No pressure.
I need you to, and I know I have educators that are on the committee, too, and that you are the most recent have been through school, right? And Mr. Myers, if you would participate, too, just based on maybe your knowledge and what your level of how teachers treated you.
Down here.
Right? Yeah. So there's some math, right? So you'll be excited that there is a little bit of math involved. So we have 10 grades. If you're type A, there are, you don't have all the information, but this is real-world teacher worlds where they live. So when we say, here are 10 grades, so the first grade that that, you could say me, received was a C, then a C, then I just missed an assignment, number three. Then we have a D, C, B, another missing assignment, another missing assignment, I have a B, and then I finished with an A. Grade 10 was an A. What I'd like you guys to do with your stickies is to say, based on your current practice, what your knowledge base is, what is a C in your world? You can figure that out. What would go in the grade book at the end of the quarter if these were the 10 grades that I received?
Numerically, and then average at the bottom?
Yeah.
What would the average be for that time period?
It can be a letter grade, or it could be a percentage, however you choose to do that. And I understand, you don't have all the information, but the best part is, there's no wrong answer. It's the answer you arrive at. Do you mind if I walk around and look what you wrote down? So, and I'm going to, I know, I might have made you feel like there's no wrong answer, but that's not the intent. The intent is to show that we had six of you participate, right? Who's a brave soul that would like to share what you had written on your sticky note?
I gave them, so I ended it up, points total-wise, I gave a 70, or a C is 70, a D is 60, so on and so forth, and a missing assignment is zero. So that came to 520 points divided by 10, 52, or an F.
So they got an F, right? And I didn't see Fs across the board. Anybody else would like to share maybe what they received?
So I took a different approach.
Yes, sir.
Which involves some rounding, which apparently is wrong, but anyway.
The rounding is good in itself, right?
Anyway, so in the absence of numbers, I assigned this based on our GPA scale, you know, one, two, three, or four points for an A, for instance. And so when you do that, you end up with 17 points, divided by 10 is a 1.7. I rounded that to a C being a 2.0.
Okay. All right.
I took a different approach. I like to give people the benefit of the doubt, so versus giving them the lowest point. I gave them the highest. So for the Cs, I gave them 79s.
Okay.
But, so they ended up, after I helped them a little bit, a 2.0.
Okay, they get 2.0. And just for, and just for the record, a 1.7 would be a D on a grading scale when it comes to GPA, a 1.7 is a D, and a 2.0 would be a C. So so far, just in three members, I have an F, I have a C, and I have a B.
No, a B?
A D, excuse me.
No, a C.
Well, you rounded it, but if we didn't, if we did.
She rounded, too. Didn't you round also?
Chairman Dodd, play along with me. It would be a D if it was a 1.7. No, no. And then any others? I think you had.
I just use the median.
The median, right. It was a, it was a C. Mr. Myers?
I reconsidered my grades.
There's no wrong answer. This is for conversation.
First calculation, I came with an average of 59, but if I give the missing assignments a 50, which is an F, not a zero, then it comes up to a 74, 74%.
Which is a C, right.
Yeah.
And I would say probably 60% of individuals end up somewhere in that C range. And traditionally, elementary has a different version than what middle and high do. Middle and high typically treat those missing assignments as zero, like Mr. Brandenburg did, that says, hey, you missed it, it's a zero. But the why behind this activity is to say, even within six members, we have a varying reflection of what would go in the grade book. So if we think about what does a grade represent, and if I, if a grade or a report card is feedback to parents, it shouldn't be so much as who the teacher had, or who the student had as a teacher, but more importantly, what they learned. So if we had Mr. Brandenburg, I would have an F in that course or that class that quarter. If I had Mrs. Luke, I would have a C. So in essence, that could be a concern, right? Which then creates concerns on leadership, having conversations with parents, because, Mr. Dodd, do you have more than one child?
Yes, I do.
Right. So depending on if I have this teacher or this teacher, it could reflect a difference in grading. So I think when the superintendent said, we have to have conversation around grading with teachers involved, and then establish that why, I think our team and Vin can speak to us to saying, that's an aha moment. Because a lot of individuals think that's, the way I grade, we all grade that way. And when I've done this at individual schools, and I sit with a fourth-grade team, sometimes the fourth-grade team isn't even on the same page. And even to go one step further, sometimes one teacher will take 35 grades and another teacher will take nine grades. So even within that, there's a fluctuation, because what is going into the grade book? So to say that this is, we've only chipped the surface is a very true statement. Because establishing the importance of really, if it is about learning, if it's about mastery, if it's about a specific standard of what students should know and be able to do, we have a lot of work to do. So when we, when we use the words like essential standards, like that's what the learning should be about. And we face several times that, and the EOCs aren't the end-all, or the FAST isn't the end-all, but if a student passes the FAST but ends up with an F, there's still a disconnect. If this is what students should learn, but I'm failing, why am I failing? Is it because I don't turn homework in? Is it because I don't do any assignments? I don't do anything? I just take tests and I fail those, but yet at the end, I know the material? I think that's the conversation that we had with our teacher group, and if you haven't noticed, I enjoy that conversation. I am passionate about that conversation and want to continue in that work with teacher leaders. So.
Did the committee have a recommendation on these 10 scores of what the framework should be?
Well.
In this scenario?
All right, if I may.
60 different versions.
I'm going to move over here, thank you. Just understanding that if this was a progression of learning, I believe we could make this an F to an A. Think of it this way, if this was a period over time, and a lot of it, we had lots of conversation about what does a missing assignment represent? How do I, how do I do that, right? You gave a zero, you ended up, after hearing from other members, you're like, hold on, a 50 is still an F, right? So if I give him a 50, that helps at the end. Is a 50 and a zero the same? We could debate that for the next hour, and I promise, I'm doing my best, right? To keep it short. But if I do represent the missing assignment as zero, that does lower my grade, right? But think of it this way, if this was a progression over time, and this was me, early learning, I had a C, C, missed the assignment, I had a D, a C, but then look what happens at grade six. B, missed two assignments, B. And if I said 10 was a culmination activity, it was my final exam, and on that final exam, I received and earned an A. In some teachers' perspective, they may say, depending on where they are in their thought process, if the most important part is learning, and that was the culminating activity, and I received an A, some teachers may feel like, then this child, this student deserves an A in my class because they mastered what the expectation was, or what the standard, grade level standard was. So we could have argument that this is an F, a D, a C, a B, or an A. And when we go back to the 3,000 teachers, we have to find some common ground. So to say that we've had lots of discussion about this within just 30 to 35 teacher individual groups, and then the middle and secondary with 30 or 35, we have a lot more work to do. But I think that part of it, it did, it was like, oh, my goodness, not everybody teaches the way that I do. And when you reflect back to how you were raised as, in education, a lot of times, we grade on either how my student teacher, who I worked with, graded, what, how I was, how I graded myself, or my individual teachers, that I actually had as teachers. So fun activity, we just wanted to make sure that we established that why. And that was all on day one. Okay? So we're going to speak through day two and day three just a little bit. But day two was kind of building and gating district understanding on essential topics, and Vin's going to kind of just talk us through kind of the collaboration piece.
I'm so glad you guys got to do the microcosm, because that's where it is, basically. It also explains why when my principal came to me and said, would you like to be on one of these committees? I said, yeah, anyone except grading. Because I had been through enough lunches with the Lake Minneola High School Social Studies Department to understand the passion that's involved here. The belief that climbing out of a zero is a lot different than climbing out of a 59. And where does behavior fit in with understanding the standard? But it's going to be a tremendous challenge, and again, ongoing. The good news, if you think of me as an end user, is, and I think Kathy would agree, we're in the right process. Because to talk to what we did, you had a whole group with those passions, banging out various priority exercises and such, to really narrow down what it was, with the intention of then going to the larger group at hand through a survey, with using the individual teacher leaders, if you will, to really probe the person who is most actionable, the principal. Because, you know, principals can set the tone for something like this, and it's going to involve tone. So we went through a series of, we did the usual icebreakers, of course, but it was when we got here that the rubber met the road, as we used to say. It was when we really had to discuss, debate, compromise, and really give up some of our mindset. And that's what we're facing still. It's going to be a mindset change. I believe we've gone through, if you think of me as an end user, I believe you've gone through the point where enough people can say, yeah, I had a voice in that. But it's still gonna, we're still going to deal with the passions, we're still going to do the mindset. From a marketing perspective, and I have a little bit of a say about stuff like that, you're in an ideal time, you're about to launch a new grading system. So talk about an opportunity for everybody to keep an open mind, change a mindset, learn something. It's an ongoing process. I would like to think the vast majority of teachers, certainly the ones that are involved, certainly union members, et cetera, are aware the process is going on and appreciate it. Is it going to be, are we going to change the zeros or the 59s overnight? Of course not. But we've got a process where we can say, it's not being forced down from the top, we're involved in this, too.
All right, thank you. And I think that, that is, it's going to be a collective effort, and I think what we've noticed again is that not everyone does or treats it the same way. So just to get more close to the center for us is the goal. So when we walked through day three, we had, we introduced, after coming up with certain questions, our committees narrowed those questions down, they took it back to their individual all schools, they did that survey that Vin mentioned, they brought their survey data back. Mrs. Dudley was instrumental in organization of all that data, because it was a huge collection process of bringing that back together. And then we established really, what were the most crucial areas that teachers had concerns about? And one, when we talked about, it's in the guide, is the redos and do-overs, there was a lot of misconception. Several teachers, even some maybe leaders, didn't realize that that was already language in the student progression plan. So then when we think, well, a teacher's not following it because of a certain grade in a parent conference, well, we realized that we need to do more understanding, even at the leader level, of making sure everyone's on the same page and knowing that's already in language, that we need to make sure that we're supporting and operating that way. So on day three, we actually, each group, we broke into sections one, two, and three on the grading guidelines. You can see over on the right, we, teacher leaders had opportunity to have input in the language that was in, the groups worked together collaboratively to actually change language, add language, take language out. And then what really was born is kind of the more narrowed, or at least our draft that we're presenting, is the grading guideline document. So we come up, those topics, the redos, do-overs, what goes in the grade book, homework participation, were the topics, the bucket items that are in the guideline for now. And I want to emphasize that this is an ongoing, working, live document that we need to add to. When we know better, we do better, right? So I think if we can get each individual teacher on the same message and same page is our goal.
I'd like to speak to a point about mindset again. I am one of those teachers that's not a big fan of homework, for various reasons, I don't need to bring it up here, but in these discussions, the research was presented and discussed and debated, and I have to open my mind to certain areas. I was home, I'm a social studies teacher, homework is for math. There's, they're, they're, all of us teachers are going to have to keep an open mind as we go through this process as well. Are we all going to do that? Of course not. But we got a good team out there, so the majority of us will.
And homework is actually also, in the student progression plan, is not being graded, right? And we even, I don't want to go down too many rabbit trails, but we understand that sometimes that gets in the way, that in the weeds, while what is, we're not saying that teachers cannot provide homework, homework is for practice, but then if there's no feedback on that practice, what is the value of the homework? And again, that has to be a conversation that we talk about. If I do math problems, you know, 10 or 20 or 30 math problems, but never provide feedback from my teacher, how do I know if I'm doing them right or wrong, or where's my misconceptions? So the most valuable piece that we talk about is So the most valuable piece that we talk about is what feedback am I providing on the homework to provide direction or correction for students? A lot of times at the elementary level, we talk about maybe reading for X amount of minutes or practicing for X amount of minutes rather than maybe the number of problems. Homework, you know, in the old school, when I was in school, it was, it was busy work, it was lots of homework. But mispractice is worse than no practice. If I practice something wrong, those create habits.
And again, on the marketing aspect, as, as focus rolls out, you're gonna have a situation where we have to adopt a new lexicon in some cases, a new jargon. Because as you yourselves found out, you were asked to put a grade and some put, went with GPA and some went with numbers and some went with letters. And the reality is, you can't say to a teacher, well, you're giving a homework assignment, you can't grade it. Of course you're gonna grade it, that's how you're gonna decide numerically. But is that a recorded grade? Okay, so there's, there's lexicon that needs to be developed as we continue through this. And unfortunately, some of that is, we'll see what sticks. But, but it's, it's something that's involved in the thought process.
And truthfully, we want this to be ongoing. So our recommendations, our next steps, revisiting the student progression plan language with leaders as well. So that if the new leader's coming in, everyone is on the same page with that teacher lead on campus to be able to drive that work. And one recommendation that our committee had with executive cabinet through the superintendent is to say, we have a great teacher leader base, but we also need to, need to make sure that we have school leadership. Because it's hard for individual teachers to carry work out with not leadership, understanding the why or the backing. We believe that needs to be a collective force, that maybe that teacher leader might become the expert on campus, but they also need the support and direction from the leadership. That's the principal, assistant principal, somebody at that level that's hearing the same message that can actually, when it comes to branding, that we're saying the same thing across the district. And each individual school is sharing that same message. So that is definitely a high end goal for us. Then bullet number two, continue to work on the best practice grading guideline with the committees. So reestablishing next year and what are our next steps? And really, that next step for us would be, how do we get more clear about what does behavior, how does a behavior affect grades right now? And if the most important piece is learning, it's about an essential standard or what students should know and be able to do, that's really where we want to do the work. And what, through our investigation, the elementary report card really does a decent job, they have 10, 20 different items, but it's under student conduct, it's that conduct grade. And when you really dig into that, there's some teachers that take that to heart and, and say, this is really important to me. And others, it might just be that S, they don't, there's not as much thought into what that conduct grade should look like. So the next steps for our committee would be saying, could we separate the behaviors out that actually represent conduct and then represent learning side of what grades represent? And if we do that, that next layer would be, do we have to inform parents about what does that look like as well? So that's kind of our next steps. Did we miss anything?
Nope, just the fact that they, we did reconvene on that Zoom call and go over the grading guidelines document that you have and got even more feedback to that and got the blessing to move forward with the committee members. We also got some, I want to be on next year committees, feedback from many of the people, so.
My back.
So we appreciate that, they must have found value and we're, we're moving forward.
And again, sometimes it's, it helps just to, you know, kind of touch on something, the, the, the challenge of number three, especially with the teachers and such. Incredible, but let me give you an example. I have a student, they've done poorly on a test. You got a relationship with the student, hopefully a relationship with the parent as well. You say, is this the grade you want? You know, of course not. Did you study? No. Okay, let's go study. Behavior, grade. It can be done, and it's being done, it's being done across the, the system. We just want to get it to the point where enough is out there and the teachers feel like they've been heard that we get a little, maybe just a little more fairness and consistency out there.
Questions?
Ready for questions on the greeting?
No. I am ready, yes.
I've got some, but I see other board members have some as well, so Tyler.
I've got one, not to get too deep in the weeds and certainly understand how monumental this task is and it's gonna, it's gonna take some time. But is there any guidelines so far from the committee on timeframe for redos and retakes? I've heard that one a lot. And the consistency side of those things, I'm just curious where, where it is, because I don't see that in the.
It's not in the guideline document, but we do, there is actual language in the student progression plan that actually is a, a change. We definitely, we, we kind of rested within that nine week period. Although teachers have autonomy if they choose to actually go back. If it's second quarter and a student learns something from first quarter, they have autonomy to go back and make a great change. Right. Yeah. And a lot of conversation was, well, what happens if they take a, a final test in the last day of the nine weeks? Well, of course, we're gonna grant them opportunity to go back within that last assignment to, to do some grade corrections. Because grades typically are not due the last day the marking period ends. We have that window of three to seven days, depending on each quarter, to make some great, great corrections and changes. That's a great question and there was lots of conversation around that.
So on, on that point about the timeline, so best practice that we're, we're not restricting kids to, okay, next week is the redo on, on Wednesday afternoon, right? So, but, but I know that that has been the mindset in some of my kids' classes, for example, that it's a scheduled opportunity, but of course, not every kid is getting it at the same rate. And so, so they might need a little more time. Or some of these activities have been a little more, this is maybe another question, parent-driven in terms of the intervention versus teacher-driven. And so if that's the case, okay, five kids, my schedule might be a little bit limited on Tuesday night. I can, can you do it on Thursday? But the language in the progression plan doesn't, it's broad on purpose.
Yes, sir.
To leave that. So would that be something that is worthwhile to, to be in this best practices guidelines about that timeframe?
Yeah, that could definitely be a next step for us. I think we want to honor teachers too. I mean, although we, we believe this is, it is student-centered, but our goal is not to make a thousand more hours of, of teaching practice for teachers, right? The continuing like, okay, Renee's is on Tuesday, Vin's is on Wednesday, that's not the goal. And we also said the redo for, for students, they have to do relearning. Without relearning, there is no redo over. I can't just take the test again on Tuesday because I did poor on Monday without relearning. So we had, the, the conversation was, well, should students initiate that relearning? In some cases, yes, but how do we ask a first grader to ask for a redo? So when you think of the broad scope, we have to think global, right? And then how does it work for the individual teacher? So there is autonomy, I'm saying a lot of words, hopefully I get to a point. There is a lot of autonomy that we do provide for teachers yet because they are ultimately the one responsible for entering grades. And we honor and respect that.
So, so in that autonomous situation, teachers, if you end up with a teacher who says, nope, the redo is on, it's on Friday, we took the test on Monday, redo's on Friday, that, that's it. My kid's not ready. You know, nothing in our, in our, the language of our progression plan says that, but does that fall back onto the autonomy of the teacher? Can the teacher limit it to, this is the day and that's the end, or are we?
Yeah, well, I think this goes into maybe another question that you, you may or may not have is how many attempts do they get at a redo?
That is another one of the questions.
Right? So, you know, I think that we, again, giving teachers autonomy, it's not, you know, I'm not a proponent that I need five times to redo something because I want to honor that teacher. But I'm more concerned in what am I relearning? Am I ready to take that assessment? Am I preparing myself to do well? So I think we've kind of rested in, yes, we should allow that redo. And I think in our guidelines, if you look at item number one on the redos, it does say on essential standards. In a student progression plan, it does not say essential standard because we're not there yet. To just say, to establish what is essential, that's all that should be allowed for redo is a best practice. But it's not actually, we don't endorse that 100% in the student progression plan. So, yet.
And it's, it's not just the teacher. You've got autonomy as a teacher, but the principal and the assistant principal of department set some tone as well. I mean, I, I got away with saying a lot of stuff I probably shouldn't have gotten away with because I knew my principal had one guiding principle, what's right for the kid. And that's part of the big weeding out process too. If, in my humble opinion, if you got a teacher that's limited to one redo on one day and doesn't take into account the kid has banned practice.
I think we need to still grow collective community on what we allow. I would love to say, as a fourth grade team, this is how my fourth grade team operates. But also, I'd like fifth grade to operate the same way so that when my, Rob Felton or goes from fourth grade to fifth grade, it's consistent. And Mr. Dot, we're not there yet. And I know that's not what the board members want to hear, but if you're in schools, you see that with your own children, we're not there. I can't come.
No, we're not, but we've come a, a long way.
Right, I want to discredit what we've done. But I would, just like we challenged leaders to say, if it's your own child, we would want to put your own child in any classroom on your campus, that is our end goal. And, and to get more consistency about that is the committee's work ethic and, and project base, that's what we want. And if we never established it, I don't think we'd be where we are right now. And, and I think we're moving in the right direction. So that doesn't answer your question, but it is a work in progress.
Sure, okay. Did you have more, Tyler? How about you, Stephanie?
I think mine isn't so much a question, it's, it's just a comment. And I appreciate that it was said about the leaders in the building. So as you guys were discussing all the teacher talk, again, a teacher can only take it back to their campus and go so far. And I have experienced a lot of that confusion. So I don't know how that's permeating. And I do think that the vision of the leader is probably the most important piece. And that it's probably different depending on where they are in this very passionate conversation. It's hard for me to sit quiet right now, I have lots of thoughts about the process and where we are and questions about what's happening. But I do think that that leadership component is probably really important. And I'm not sure, I don't know that this board has established goals around what we're looking for from this. I don't know that a top-down, this is what it is, is gonna fit at all of our buildings either. Because I think with the approach that we're working with kids, some of my concerns, just so you guys know, are maybe a little bit opposite, which is interesting. For instance, you mentioned Mr. Felton, when a student gets, passes their FSA but they have failing grades, well, what about the opposite of that? When a student fails the FSA or their end of course exam and they have As and Bs in a course, what does that tell you about grading? I have some grave concerns about our elementary math curriculum, not sharing with parents. How do you parents help when they don't receive any work from the math book? I think that's something we should look at. I have had students friend groups, right? So my, my high schooler doesn't watch the board meetings, thankfully. This isn't my high schooler. I have created a little mini Task A, step-oriented person in my oldest, but she has friends that don't. And I literally had a child say to me, I don't have to worry about doing my work because I get to do it all the last nine weeks and turn it all in and her grades are fine. And for my child, she's like, why do I stay up till midnight when I have a game the next day that's super important and I'm exhausted and this kid gets the same grade I give? They don't do any work until the last nine weeks of the grading period. That hurts and it's a choice, right? So it's not, we're suggesting kids that are relearning, kids that haven't learned the material yet, what about the kids that just aren't because they don't want to? And I see that, like in some of this, in some of your posters, like redos for assessments, teacher discretion. I get that because what teacher wants to honor that kid? Like you did nothing, you sat here, I keep pointing at you.
Come on, Molly, step up.
And so I, and I, I can't help but lump this into the behavior aspect, which is so tightly interwoven with grading. But how do we get some of the students' challenges of accountability that we're all experiencing as educators with some of this, it's okay if you don't get it? Like I'm not an everybody gets a trophy kind of mama, I've never been that way. We needed to step up and do the work, but I realize not everybody has a mama that looks at the grades all the, you know what I mean? And then the next words out of this child's mouth were, my mom will let me fail. So, so there's lots, there's lots of dynamics that we're fighting. I think that having a vision is really important. I don't know that, that's all that I want to say about that, but it is. Just Tyler has an 11:35 deadline, just so.
He does not.
I'm just kidding, it's just a lot, it's a lot, right? And I appreciate the conversation. I think that I could sit in a room with teachers and we could talk about it all day long. It depends about, and I remember Linda Bartberger sitting in here from Round Lake and she said, each grade level has, this is their plan. And I remember you suggesting, well, I got five kids, if they've all got a different one, which goes to your point. But at the same time, at this point, at today's point, I would be happy with my grade level team being on the same page. And next year, here's my grade level team. And then next year, and then we can talk about, what's your grade level team doing? What's my grade level team doing? What's your grade level team doing? And maybe there can be some consistent points.
And in some schools, we've been able to do that. I'm with you, I think it's more glaring when a student has As and Bs and fails the assessment at the end because then I'm saying, what am I grading? What, so that kind of goes, what's in the gradebook? I mean, I, yeah, so I know we have to move on. I would love to continue conversation with any one of you about what direction or through the superintendent, what you would like us to honor. A thousand percent, we need leaders that have the same message and understanding and we're not, we're not there. I, I would agree with that.
I don't have a question, but I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think the presentation was great, thank you. I also believe, or I'm very intrigued by your conversation about having it with leaders. I think that's real important. I agree with everything my peers have said. But for me, I think that the culture is what you gotta fix and the leaders are where you have to go to do that. So I think it's very important that once the committee has finished this important work, that you do include the leaders and that you do make sure that you bring them along with you. Because if you don't, then you're gonna be right back to the same thing. But certainly, this is important work, it has been important work for a long time. And I really appreciate your efforts to hopefully help us come up with some things that we can work with. So that people like Mr. Myers does not have to reconsider his grade.
So, you know, I, I'm just real excited about having such a great group of teachers come together to, to weigh in on this. I think there's maybe a little disconnect, you know, when, we sit up here and maybe it's been a number of years since we've been in the classroom or, you know, just trying to evaluate, trying to establish current practices based on maybe how we went to school many years ago, right? You know, I was just having that conversation with my kids the other day, what learning looked like when I was in elementary school and how it's dramatically more effective today, you know? And so, so getting, getting a group of people together has been, has been great. And from my experience, I've seen that there are, just, just as kids get things at different rates, adults do also. And so I've experienced it, you know, and a couple dozen teachers my kids have had this year. Some have embraced the, the redo opportunities and some have really dug their feet in the grounds and protesting. And, and I, I don't know, I don't know why, you know, but, but that's, that's happened. So I'm, I'm really excited about understanding that this is a process and it didn't all happen in one year. All right, and so, and I just love, you know, Vin, that you can speak so passionately as the, you know, boots on the ground and be able to take that back to your teachers and, and hopefully, you know, as we're building capacity with everybody who's taking that back to their school, this is gonna be able to, you know, just be unrecognizable to us in, in five years from now or down the road. We'll be like, wow, could you believe when we didn't give kids a second chance to show what they know, you know?
To Ms. Cunningham's point, and again, I cannot speak for all the teachers and the principals. The principals chose us. So chances are when we say teacher leader, sorry arrogant, we've got that relationship. I could go back to my principal and there was, okay, there's an urgency here. And again, if you're dealing with a principal that gets it, you know, that knows that it is, we're not all the way to bright. But it's something I think, you know, we're all working toward.
So as you, as you reconvene and have future dialogue going forward, I, I do have some questions that I just want to kind of throw on to your radar that I, I don't expect that you've got question, answers today for, for some of these things. But as we're navigating that essential standard component, now obviously now we've got a difference in the language here in this best practices guide versus the progression plan. For, in terms of school board policy, that doesn't limit to essential standards at this point. So right now, if, if a kid is having a notebook check, which is not even a standard to begin with, right? But they're having a notebook check and they, they bombed that for whatever reason. And now they take it home, mom or dad signs it the next day, now they can get 100 if they redo that assignment, you know? That's still able to be redone, right? Based on the language in the progression plan.
Right.
Although.
The whole goal.
That shouldn't have been great to begin with.
I know, right. The whole goal is to say, that's a behavior, can I organize my notebook?
Sure, absolutely.
A notebook is not important because it is, that skill is maybe an essential skill. But depending on what is that grade level expectation or standard, that is, I think you're spot on with that.
Or, or, then, then I'm wondering if there's a point where we might define how, where proficiency has not been demonstrated? So if, as I think this line is here about, oh, there it is, in the first line, about the retake must be available for students where proficiency has not been demonstrated. Is it 80 proficiency, is it 60 proficiency?
We probably had a two-hour conversation, what does proficient mean?
That's right.
So we've, we've had that, we've left the word proficient in there, but we know there needs to be more work on that, yes.
Excellent. About engaging in the learning activities, that's, that's another one. I've, I've seen, once again, this is all over the board, you know, where, where the teacher's like, well, I've already taught it once. Mom or dad, it's your turn. And, and like I said, sometimes that's scheduled, you know, as an educator myself, I, I don't mind. I love being that partner at home, right? But I, I know that not every household looks exactly like mine. And so I, I think about those kids who might not have that same level of support. And so are we relying on mom or dad to reteach this? And so are we relying on mom or dad to reteach this versus what is the intervention?
We still believe the teacher is the expert, that we'd like time with a teacher on that redo. So the intervention time would be, or small group setting. But again, thousand teachers have a different perspective of what that time looks like. So we are, I know we keep saying it's a work in progress, but just trust us. I think some schools, some leaders, some teams are further along than others. That's the nature of this work.
That's right. And with that, I think that, you know, you also get, the feedback is going to look different in places, right? Because if mom or dad has gone through this with you, we're going to trust that that's right. Test corrections, I think some folks are assuming the test correction is right, right? Because the kid now have the book and have the opportunity to look back. I look back at some of my kids' test corrections and going, that's still not right. But you're going to go take this test? Oh, I really hope there's the feedback. Oh, no, we're not going to get it back in time. So there's that, you know, that feedback component is really important. I love that you all are valuing that, that process as well. I love that that's on your radar too, that, you know, my eight-year-old will be like, no, I don't want to redo that. Let's redo it, right? You know, versus you get somebody else. I just don't know that an eight-year-old has that judgment call to, you know, to understand that, like, parents have to be involved in their, in that decision too, like, no, no. Clearly, he doesn't understand this, and it's important that he does. And so let's, let's, I'd really like him to see in the, him in the relearning process, you know? But when he sees all his friends out playing on the playground, he doesn't want to give that up to, you know, go review some math, right? Who does? Right? The zero, the concept of the zeros. And I know that it's a placeholder, right? I've seen that in some places. There are implications. You know, I had a kid play athletics this year, and teachers were putting zeros in there because of that. It looked like he was academically ineligible to play. Teachers don't, don't understand that, that component there. And so now coach has got to go back and like, why do you have 30 in this class? Oh, because we've only had one assignment that's graded, the others are placeholders. Like that, that's, that's not an accurate perception. I don't, I don't understand that placeholder thing, and I really wish that was a practice that could be. I mean, if you haven't turned it in, it's a placeholder, but like, when they first enter the assignment in Skyward, they just plug a zero in for everybody. If you're not ready to grade it, then don't, don't, don't put zeros in. Why would you want to do all that extra work? I don't know. But, you know, that's been a challenge, you know, appearing academically ineligible to play athletics.
Well, just so that we're clear on athletics, it is a semester-based GPA that makes you eligible or not eligible.
True.
It may be the individual coach.
Individual coaches.
And you give me a progress report at the end of every week to check progress. But that can be communicated through either athletic department or best practice. But to me, that's maybe.
Well, and I, and I think the coach knows it's, it's obviously a semester thing, but we're not going to wait till the end of the semester to find out that you're struggling, right? That he is checking on kids.
Right. Which we encourage.
Every week. That's right. And that, you know, which, which is certainly a great desire, but it looks like, it looks like kids are struggling that are not. Or mom and dad are at home going, tell me about all these zeros. Are you not doing your work? See, now, now I've become numb to a zero in a grade book. I'm just going to expect that it's there. I don't know if the kid actually has not done it until the end of the grading period. I'm like, oh, that's still a zero, you know, because they're just so commonplace. And so that's, that's, that's a struggle for me looking at home. But maybe that's another.
I'm going to add to that. I believe as we had that conversation about the zeros and placeholders, it had something to do with the limitations of Skyward as well. And I think move, the move to focus will give us greater flexibility in rectifying some of that.
That's great news.
Yeah. So I, I'm seeing, yes, you're in the back.
All right. That's good. That's good.
But I will say, it does go down to teacher interpretation too. So it is that learning piece of all members of Lake County.
Yeah. And I'm going to piggyback on Stephanie's concern for the, the feedback on learning, you know, or the being able to see your kids' work. I really, really have struggled with that, that as so much is now online, I never, you never see my kids' work. You know, there's a drop off that happens from fifth grade to sixth grade. For instance, in my household, I never saw any of my kids' sixth grade work. But yet in fifth grade, every paper came home, you know? And so like, I could look at it and reinforce it. But now, sixth grade, how do I, that level of support for schooling stopped, you know, in that level because it's so electronically based or the kid is getting real-time feedback through iExcel. And the only way I know if my kid is struggling in math is often I'm standing there watching him complete all his iExcel problems versus, I haven't seen any of them on paper. I don't know. I don't know until your test score came home that you were struggling, you know? And so it's a real thing. I don't know how to, in this electronic age, make that accessible to parents, but I feel like, I feel like we've got to see the kids' work. Just a few, few items to throw on your radar.
Noted them all, especially when you said five years. This is the five-year plan. Started with that one.
Good. You wrote that down.
I did.
Good. Excellent.
I lied. I do have one more.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So as you can see, I'm certainly more analytical on some of these things and appreciate the conversation we're having here. The other one was around grading more in middle and high school with the makeup of the grade. I certainly appreciate the grade on learning and not on behaviors. But then what goes into that grade? Is it assignments, quizzes, and tests? What's the makeup? Do tests make up 60%, 70%, whatever? That'll certainly take time to get at. But I would think the end goal down the road would be to have set standards there of tests are always going to be 60% of your grade, whatever else. And that could be by grade or by middle versus higher, whatever. But as we keep moving forward, I just think that's so important on the consistency and how that grade is made up if we're truly looking at learning. So I don't know if there's a, that was more of a comment for long-term than an answer. But what that looks like long-term, I'd be curious.
I appreciate you bringing that up because as I was looking back at my list, there was one out of mine missed, and it was exactly that.
I feel really smart.
No. No, that's right. You know, because, well done, well done. Because as you look in the school, you know, you get that inconsistency. We're in one class, and 70% of your grade are these assessments. And so no matter what you score on those assessments, that's pretty much going to be your grade, right? And everything else you do is going to have such little weight, it's not going to pull up. Whereas next door, it's 50% or less than that. Or, I don't know, maybe this is a limitation of Skyward versus Focus, but one challenge I ran into this year with, there was a category weighted 70%. Teacher only gave one assignment. And therefore, my inquiry was, okay, so are there going to be other assignments? Because we've got a rule that it shouldn't be more than 30% of single assignment. Or, because they felt, they couldn't change it, Skyward. Is Focus going to be able to allow you to be like, oh, that didn't work? That weighting didn't work? Or are you locked in for the whole year?
Yeah. I believe we can.
Dwayne's going to come up and address that. He's been focused on all of this.
Focused.
Focused.
Well done. It's a great pun. So a couple of things. We have been training some of the first flyers, that's what we're calling them. And so teachers have come in and they've expressed frustration at that particular limitation. Part of that limitation centers around the fact that Skyward is relatively rigid. And when I set something that might make a lot of sense in the first quarter, by the third quarter, maybe I don't have that project or so. And so what we will have is, is that in Focus, you have the ability to customize per quarter, like what the percentages are. And that kind of keeps that because Focus actually, unlike Skyward, Focus can take that into account. Skyward would actually go back and attempt to recalculate prior quarter grades. And so like, if you've got a 70% category that's floating out there, and sometimes as teachers, we learn that maybe that just didn't materialize the way we thought it would.
Right.
We can make that adjustment per course, per quarter.
Okay.
And so I think that'll increase, you know, some flexibility for folks.
Yeah. I think that flexibility is helpful for the reason you designed. But I guess with great power also comes great responsibility, right? We can't just have this arbitrary grading system that's changing every quarter and then nobody can figure out what it's going to be this week.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I think that's fair.
Some of the best practice on that will be, you know, you still have to communicate or make it a logical rating system.
For sure. But a lot of teachers did express to us that, like what they set in pre-planning, they're kind of locked into.
Right.
And when the material, when the real world hit, it just didn't quite, you know, come out the way they thought.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Appreciate that new feature for Focus.
May I add something? I'm, I, just listening again to this conversation, I wonder if we've looked at the amount of time that is associated with re-dos, re-grades, re-teach, planning purposes of this. So I feel like, and this is work across the United States, right? So when you guys speak about essential standards, I'm just going to sit here and be quiet about that because I know some of the direction with Solution Tree that works with that in regards to standards-based grading and like, are we only going to grade essential standards or not and all of that? When I, when I think about the conversations I've had with staff that I've worked with in their schools, it's always, we don't have time. There's no time to plan. We're planning, we're planning our core curriculum, and then we have to plan interventions. And then depending on where these kids are, we're going to have to plan to reteach, reteach, reteach 52 different skills. And so when we talk about encompassing our leadership and how that works, how do we talk about scheduling conflicts? Have we looked at the dynamic of the timeframe that is associated with this level of work? I think some of that work needs to be looked at because I'm, I feel like that for teachers. I think, and that's to your point, Mr. Dodd, and I feel it as a teacher. Just so you guys know, some of my assignments are not, you can't fail them. If you fail them, you fail the course, and it's their senior year. I'm not going to fail your course. So we go back and forth. And what it translates to in my professor world is hours of grading. Hours with feedback. Hour, like, I can't stress to you guys enough, in the spring semester, when my students are doing their teacher work sample, I grade more than I do anything else because I'm trying to give explicit feedback, trying to give them the opportunity to fix it so that they don't fail a course and then not graduate on time. So it's really important work. It's really stressful in the amount of time that it takes me to work. And it doesn't matter. I revisit it every spring. I teach this course every spring before their graduation. It's their capstone course. Okay, how can I do this better? How can I do this different so I don't have five or six students that are struggling that I'm having to go back and regrade and go back? This, this semester, I invited my students to my house on Friday afternoons once a month just to sit and work on the assignment with me. Like, I just see that, like, when you translate that to how many teachers we have in this district, how many students that we have that don't get stuff? What is the hour assumption that I'm working under? And then the, I think there's just a lot of that to consider too. It's not as easy as, and I'm a mama of three, not quite as many, right? But I have, I have kids that, I have one kid that doesn't have to study, and she's amazing. I have another student that has to study. Like, I, I have all the spectrum. I want a teacher that wants to look at Jace Luke and say, we're going to redo this, buddy. And you're going to sit, and you're going to focus, and you're going to go back and do it. But I, I also can hear the time associated with that for that one child times 20 to 25 students, times how many courses am I teaching, times my requirements for grading. And so I know that we have the people in the room, the boots on the ground that are talking about that. But I think that's where that leadership component is going to become so important too, because we do have to have an ability to safeguard some of that associated. But how do we do what's right for kids while safeguarding the time? Because it's time. It's time.
Yeah. The time is.
It's a lot.
Real challenge.
All right. Man, I do want to honor our time, so.
Should have been the only topic on the agenda, this.
That's where we went first.
I can overnight her.
That's true.
All right.
Superintendent?
Yeah. Now, I want to thank you all for continuing to lead this work and just being a part of the conversation. Everything you have talked about are the things that we heard and working through all of that. And in fact, that first one, you saw some of the sticky notes, a slide of that, there were charts all over the wall of just everything that they wanted to consider. And we said, okay, where do we want to start? Like, so we started taking charts down off of the wall and saying, let's, let's pick the top three things we feel like we can tackle. And so there's still a lot of work to be done. And then, and certainly the, the issue of time and how do we support teachers with that, you know, was, was a big concern as well. So, and I think you'll hear more about that as the intervention group comes up because we heard it there too as well, thinking about interventions and re-dos. Because while the work was three different subcommittees, I think you'll see that the three are combined in a lot of ways, and a lot of the conversations transition regardless of what convers, or what committee they were on. And I think the other common piece that you'll hear is that work around essential standards. So, so I want to thank you all. Thank you, Ben, for being a, a great part of this work.
Happy summer.
That was great.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, happy summer, but you might be doing work over this. Right.
Well, that was fun. What's our next subcommittee? Will we discuss this one?
I'm sure.
All right.
I think, I think, no, we're doing pass and discipline.
Pass and discipline.
So I will start by saying mine is not as exciting. I don't have any activity. I was actually back there doing, like, what could I have them do? But I think we're just going to stick with the actual presentation to get the day going. Again, good morning, and I just wanted to say that I was truly honored to facilitate this work group. When the superintendent first brought it up, I was like, day one on the job, and I was like, oh my God, how am I going to do this? Okay, but as I started digging in, I really was excited about the opportunity. And then getting to work with these amazing people was just great. Relationships have been built. So I do think we are going to continue some work going forward similarly to what you just heard with Mr. Felton. So I do want to thank the committee members for their time. They agreed to only three meetings originally. But I would send out emails with things, I would call meetings and they, and they would jump right in. So I just really want to thank them for going above and beyond to participate in this process. Whoops. Okay, so just want to jump in quickly to our purpose as a committee. I won't read every slide for the sake of time, but I do think it's important to, to just speak on what we wanted to do. So again, we wanted to gain knowledge and deeper understanding around the district's PASS program and student discipline systems. The why behind that was so that we could evaluate and determine if our current programmatic structures and systems needed revising, amending, or tightening. And our how was to engage our colleagues in generating decisions and recommendations to you all as, as a board and to district and school-based leadership. Our goals, I used a problem-solving and decision-making process in order to work through the work that we needed to do. So you'll see some of that work type referenced throughout the presentation. And also you have a folder that looks like this that I slid in, sorry, Ms. Natalie, that has some handouts in there as well. So you can see some of the documents that we used to work through the work.
Are you going to introduce your guests? I think that's the conversation.
I am. I was going to wait till I got here.
I'm going to wager from process of elimination at the, on the intro slide, you're John Larkin.
I was going to go here because I need to also introduce Dr. Byfield and Mr. Sellis. So before I jump into the agenda, because this is really where these individuals came in, was at this part, was the work part. So I do want to start with Dr. Byfield in the back. She did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and so did Mr. Sellis. They did a lot of the activity planning around this work. And Mr. Larkin was a very active member of our committee, and he is from Sawgrass Bay Elementary. So, we're good there?
Perfect.
Right.
Apparently I don't know every teacher in my district. I'm so sorry.
Why not? So again, as I said, I wanted to jump into the agenda first because that actually ties to these individuals. The first part was just launching our why and how we got here. But when I look at the work that was needed to be done for this group, the individuals in the room really helped frame some of that and participate in that. So our first meeting was around PASS and student discipline. A lot of the information that teachers wanted to know about PASS was, I don't know what goes on in PASS. I have no idea, you know, I don't understand it. Nobody's really explained the information to me. So that first meeting, I took time to dig into all of the documents that had been shared with PASS teachers, and some were shared with administrators. Here is what PASS looks like. Here is what it should look like. I even brought in the presentation that was brought to the board back in 2018, I believe, right, when we got the idea to launch PASS. Because they needed background knowledge and understanding of why we chose to go this route and how we got there. So that was meeting number one, really to look at, hear all the resources. And got a lot of feedback from the committee members was, I have no idea. I didn't know, I hadn't seen that before. I wasn't aware. So it was really to give them some background knowledge and some understanding. And then our next meeting was again, was to start with our share-out discussion and fact-finding. Because at that meeting, I brought in the code of student conduct. A lot of teachers, yes, they review at the beginning of the year, but to really have that background knowledge and understanding of what is the code of conduct for? Why do we need a code of conduct? How should we utilize the code of conduct? And then I broke down all the levels within the code of conduct as well. So then we started working through some of that information as, as a team. And then our last face-to-face meeting was just a recap of all of our sessions, and we had, they had gathered information from their school teams, and we were working through that as well. And you actually have a document in your folder that shows that work as well. And into the spring, where we had narrowed down our three items that we had chosen to focus on, they took that information back to their school teams and sat down with their leadership teams or got in coalitions and worked through some of that information. And then we had a final meeting that was facilitated really by Dr. Byfield and Mr. Sellis, was to work through that information. And we had breakout rooms where they would go from one room to the next, provide information and feedback in order for us to go to our next steps for the committee work. So in meeting one, this is just a quick snapshot of some of those items that I discussed with them from the first meeting. It was again, to give them that programmatic overview, the components of PASS, and our purpose of PASS, to give that program structure. And then the second, the next slide shows the documents for the successful implementation of PASS. I know some of you may have seen that PASS guide from a while back. We shared that as well. Also shared the PASS brochure. Several of the PASS teachers says, oh my God, I've never even seen that. I didn't know we had a brochure. So we shared that as well. Again, reviewed the implementation documents and how to launch a program with fidelity. And then we also discussed, how do we monitor, how do we monitor PASS, right? How do we monitor what we said we would do when we launched PASS? So we talked about some of those pieces and also how we tied in restorative practices as a part of launching a successful PASS program. So we had conversation around that. And then we talked about, remember when PASS first launched? It was in the 1920 school year. So that was, really would have been our first full year. But we all know what happened at the end of that school year. And then 21 and 22 school years, there was a lot of different things going on in, in school buildings. So we do think some of our PASS systems may not have rolled out as tightly as we had wanted them. So that was acknowledged and said, hey, this is why we're doing this, so we can look at what we need to do going forward. And then we dug into the code of conduct to really break down and talk about these different categories and levels of offenses in the code, and what should you be doing when you are signing discipline in the code? And sometimes discipline isn't always the, the best route. There are other things that you could do with students versus punitive consequences. So we talked about that as well, and we vetted those pieces. And then you will see here, it's just a slide to capture all the different ways we vetted information. We got feedback from teachers, we vetted that information, we used a problem-solving document, we did a fidelity document, we also did a ranking document to decide what will be the things that we will work on as a committee. And that's how we walked away with the three pieces of communication was a barrier for schools around PASS, needing to create discipline ladders, matrices and SOPs is what we walked away with, and then revising the reintegration plan of PASS. So through all of those meetings and conversations and vetting and vetting and reviewing and getting, and having dialogue, we walked away with these three key pieces to work on and focus. So now I will turn it over to Mr. Larkin, so he can talk about the feedback and the opportunities and the input from his perspective as a committee member.
Well, first off, thank you for having me here this morning. PASS is a program that I am particularly enthusiastic about. When it first came around, my principal was talking with me about it, and I'm like, scratch what I wanted to do before, I want that. I wanted to do that. I taught, I was the PASS teacher at Claremont Middle up until the time we had to close the school to start the rebuilding process. I'm now the dean at Sawgrass Bay, and it's something that I work very closely every day with the PASS teacher and certainly with the rest of the admin team to, you know, to make this work well. We, through this process and the process itself, I was really surprised at how valuable it was, because what it ended up yielding after we, you know, put all the, the boards up on the walls and the sticky notes and, you know, fought over an awful lot of things were to, can we back up to that, the three thing, three topics, please? Was to back up to these three things that really were issues that we all dealt with. And communication, well, communication across all levels in a, in an establishment is always the most difficult, the most difficult thing. And that was part of it, whether, you know, communicating as to why, why we're doing the program as, as, you know, Ms. Dylan Banks pointed out, you know, why do we even have this? Also communicating with, you know, when the children are going back, that reintegration piece, are we communicating, you know, even the amount of work they've done in there? And then dealing with our ladders and matrices for, for discipline, communicating, you know, what's it going to look like if not, if I'm not following the rules? What am I going to have to do? So the feedback was really, really important. And nailing it down to those three items, it was amazing how quickly across the entire, you know, school system, those three things kind of really jumped out at us. And it was really from the process that, you know, Ms. Dylan Banks, Dr. Byfield, Mr. Sellis took us through, and we went back and, and worked on, you know, what are we doing and how can we improve it? We ended up as a part of this creating a really fine, what I think is a really fine discipline ladder at, at the school, and then had a, had a really good conversation on those when we came back together as a part of this. And I think that was at the Zoom meeting, if I remember correctly. Anyway, but the process itself was valuable because we ended up coming up with a fairly doable number of items that I think as a system-wide, we all need to focus on.
And just to talk about the feedback, there was multiple opportunities for the committee members to take information back to their school teams. I want to make sure that that piece is captured. Because I would send out information and say, okay, we need to go back to our school teams, and that's what Mr. Larkin's referring to. They need to feel like they're a part of the process. You are the representative, but bring in your school teams to get their feedback so that their voices are heard. Because we want to make sure that when we walk away, me, Dr. Byfield, and Mr. Sellis, with our deliverables, we've heard from as many voices as we can, so when we, when we roll out our final documents, teachers will say, okay, they listened, okay. They took our feedback and actually are bringing back a document or documents that we can use. So I just want to capture, that's what those email screenshots are of me sending information back.
Back and forth and back and forth.
Back and forth, because we wanted to make sure we got it right. Because there was no point in doing all of this if we weren't serious about it. So just wanted you to know there was communication back and forth, which led to the Zoom call that was on May 10th, where we did do breakout rooms and give the committee members an opportunity to, again, give more feedback. And they also made connections to other things that we're doing in the district, say, hey, now that we're doing this, we might want to go back and, they brought up PBIS. So different things started coming out of that conversation, and we made notes of that as well, so.
We even tweaked our own discipline ladder while we were doing that Zoom call, just the back and forth. One of the things we realized that we had left out on that discipline matrix was a statement at the bottom about discretion of the principal. And that wasn't on there, but it's critical. Because without it, you can, you know, you can be forced into doing something that may not be necessary or proper.
So, and that's why it was important for us as a group to talk through some of these things. So that's really what came from that Zoom call as well. And again, I do want to thank them for being willing to jump on, even some after contract hours. They jumped on because they wanted to be a part of this process, so I am grateful for that. And then this is just to show that we have a shared drive where we upload and all of our information and where our final documents will be shared with the committee members. Principals have access to this drive as well, and so does Ms. Emery and Ms. Smith. So again, it's just a collective group of professionals working to try to address items that we believe needs some, need a fresh look at and to keep, to keep our systems updated. So this is where our work will live, and we will continue to place information in there. So our next steps in committee work completion, again, we are here today for a workshop. Dr. Byfield's PASS teacher writing team, I think, starts June 1st or maybe tomorrow the 31st. I forget one of those days. But she'll be sitting out with the PASS teachers to start really working, start working on those things we talked about, to create those updated protocols and that reintegration plan. So it'll be ready to roll out when teachers come back in the fall and the communication process as well. And then what Mr. Sellis will be doing is gathering all the information that we've heard from the, the teacher groups and then create like a one-page or best practices document. So that will also be housed in the Google Drive for our teacher leaders and our building principals as well. And I believe that is my last slide. Are there any questions for us?
I saw a note from Tyler. Stephanie, you looked really deep in thought there.
No, I am. I just, I want to see some of this stuff, so it's good to start. I'm excited. I think that there's a lot of potential here. I think anytime we can keep students in school instead of at home or watching whatever they do, that's, that's important. So I'm just appreciative of your work, and I look forward to you coming back. And is it early August that we're going to get some more information? So I'm looking forward to that.
Me too.
It's a shame your topic isn't as controversial as the last one.
Yeah, no, I feel like.
Because we had a lot more lively discussion.
If you'd like, I can happily talk for the next 45 to 50 minutes on PASS. It is a fantastic program. We, it, it needs all the attention it's getting. It is one of the few ways we take the time, effort, and energy to look into the child where they're having some problems. It gives everybody just a break from the pace that we're all on at the school and gives us an opportunity to ask, hey, why? What can we do to help? What can we do to make things better for you? And, you know, sometimes, sometimes that doesn't occur until, you know, until you have an issue, until something's happened. And then you have a space, you have a program, you've got a process to take a look at those and dig a little bit deeper and find out, you know, oh, are the problems I'm having stemming from, I'm not sure where I'm eating dinner tonight, or I don't have a bed of my own, you know, we're not, you know, we're not sure where we're going to be living next Or are they academic? You know, I feel like I'm a failure in reading. I really, I'm, you know, I'm sixth grade, I'm eighth grade, and I don't know how to read well, and I'm embarrassed by it. So it's something that, you know, literally is, is an incredible program. I was thrilled to death when I had the opportunity to, to take part in it. And it's something that when, you know, Ms. Banks explained what we were doing, I'm like, yeah, sign me up, so.
Well done, well done. I think you really understand kids. I can hear it as you speak. I did have one question about PASS, and maybe not specific to this. Obviously, one of the goals of PASS is to keep kids in school, right? So we're able to reduce some out-of-school suspension consequences, keep them in school for an in-school suspension. I'm wondering, though, if there is a certain convenience factor that occurs of saying, oh, we have a PASS room, maybe there's some, some offenses that normally I wouldn't have in-school suspended a kid, but since I have it available, it's just so easy for me to send you to PASS. Does that ever occur? Do we ever have folks going to PASS who maybe could have done one of those or not parts of your slide there?
I won't say that doesn't happen, because obviously I'm not in every school and I wouldn't know that. But I think that's the importance of having a standard operating procedure or a discipline ladder. Because that way it is clear, these are the things that may land you either in PASS or it may land you in a Wednesday school. Or, and it could be where it's tiered. Your first offense could land you, you know, with, with a parent conference, but then you could end up in PASS. So there could be some flavor of a little bit of that going on in a school. But again, I would, I don't, I don't know that. I'm not saying it's not happening. I just don't know if it, if I can truly say, yes, I have an example of that, you know, happening in, in a school. But I do think that's why it's important that we, schools create a ladder or a matrix or an SOP so that everybody knows this is what happens if you do these, these things. And I think that might eliminate some of that, well, I have a PASS and I'm just going to, you know, PASS programs, I'll put you here. I think that would help if we have that, because it's communicated to teachers, parents, and then everybody's on the same page.
I think you're absolutely right.
I think that will help that, if that is occurring.
May I speak to that too?
Yes, please.
Would you flip back to that restorative practices slide, please?
You think I can figure it out?
One of the things that, I'm an old dog, and this was a new trick when I first got into the PASS program, that keeps you so much from exactly what you just described.
Okay, good.
This process was something that I poo-pooed initially, and as we got into it more deeply, found out it takes care of an awful lot of those things that would lead to exactly what you, you know, what you were explaining. It allows you to take those conflicts between students, sort them out, and keep the students out of the process. It works just as well with student-teacher conflicts that so often gets that child in PASS. You know, and it's, it's a, we've used it as a basis for our discipline ladder, and it's a very, very important part of that process. And the more I kind of brought it, they, you know, obviously they'd heard about it when I got to Sawgrass, but I think I was the person who had used it the most. And so kind of became, took the lead on that, and we used it basically as often as we could to solve the problems, to keep the kids in the classroom versus the PASS classroom. So that's a really important part of the whole discipline matrix and the PASS program, because you can even do the restorative practices within the PASS program, once they're assigned to in-school suspension, to even reduce the recidivism of the PASS, you know, of having to use PASS with the same child.
If I could just elaborate on that a little bit, I think one of the things that I would like to see is the, the use of the PASS teachers across all of our schools. So I have some concerns that there are some PASS teachers that may be obsolete in the work that we're talking about, and we have some schools that probably need additional support in PASS. And so I know that we've talked a lot of, at this, in this room about how schools have different needs, and I, I may be completely wrong, but I would assume that there are some schools that could use additional supports and some schools that maybe don't even have a reason for PASS. So I would like to look at that.
That's a very valid point. Some schools get the benefit of using their PASS teacher for so many of the things, because they, they don't, or rarely have a kid in-school suspended, whereas other schools might have a.
And we, I, I believe in the program wholeheartedly. I think it's an excellent program. I think it has a lot of benefit. And I do think when we're caring about behaviors, and I think that's something that we'll talk about as well, but when we hear about those things, if there's schools that need additional support versus some that don't, it would be opportunity to provide that.
I have that written down. I know this group has a lot of work still to do as well, but those communication tools, I think, are very critical and something we heard a lot from the teachers in regards to sometimes, and it was from both perspectives. The PASS teacher would say, well, I'm not real sure what you did and why you're here. And then when they would go back to the classroom, the classroom teacher didn't know what happened while they were in PASS. So that communication, so this reintegration form and things that they're working on in terms of communication and re-establishing, relaunching the why, I think is really critical. And then the discipline ladder was the other kind of aha moment that we all had. And in, in every single conversation, wherever there was a challenge, there was a teacher in the room, which was the power of the group, that said, we already have a solution for that. Let me just share you what our school is doing. And so we had an elementary and a middle and high version of the, of the discipline ladder, which was already in use at schools had already generated, that they were having success with. And so they tweaked them a little bit, so as far as developing some consistency for middle schools to have a ladder that they were following, and elementary to have a ladder that they were developing. Every school, you know, was not required, again, was a best practice, but to be able to have the document to go back and start really establishing those. really establishing those protocols and those consistencies. So that was exciting to have those conversations. I know that it's still a work in progress. But I think that one, you'll see a little bit more of those documents coming sooner, cause I think that's, the idea is that we'll have that ready for the start of the school year. So with some of the summer work. Um, and we're gonna take a sidebar here, because in addition to the work that they were doing around discipline and PASS, we had a subcommittee, the subcommittee that was working on, um, another issue that we heard a lot from teachers, and that was how to deal with some of our more significantly behavioral challenged students. And so Melissa Liefert has been spearheading some work in the district around that work, along with Dr. Myers at Lake Hills, um, and just an amazing team that have already started the work in some of our schools. And they're gonna give you an update on what is called the structured classroom and the work that's happening there under the umbrella of this work as well. So, um, and then we'll, wherever you'd like to go. Thank you both very much. Thank you, Mr. Liefert.
Thank you, ma'am.
Be the same as everyone else.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm excited to have the opportunity to present to you some of the work that we've been doing with our students who have the most complex behavioral, cognitive, and communication needs. Thank you. Um, this is certainly, uh, this structured classroom initiative is certainly a collaborative effort between Lake Hills School and the District Office. But it began at Lake Hills. And Dr. Myers and her team recognized that due to the increase in the number of students with autism on their campus and the number of students with the most challenging behaviors, that they needed to look at some changes. Particularly, they were looking at how can we increase student engagement and reduce the number of challenging behaviors. Um, the solution, as they would discover, is creating structured classrooms. And so they now have, they redesigned thirteen classrooms that are now fully structured classrooms, and they've provided intensive training and support to the teachers in those classrooms. The superintendent visited Lake Hills and had an opportunity to see just how effective this structured teaching method was for the students. And as a result, reached out to me and said, you know, what can we do? How can Lake Hills collaborate with the ESE District Office in order to extend these practices to all of our schools? And so as I go through the presentation today, please know that many of the structured teaching resources that I share with you were created by Jean Grady. She's a teacher at Lake Hills with input from teachers and staff from both the district and the school-based level. And I did provide you with two handouts that I will be referencing. You have a copy of the best practices for the structured, for structured classrooms and the pathway to a structured classroom in front of you. So structured teaching was developed at the University of North Carolina, and it was the Division of Teach, and that's the Training and Education of Autistic and Related Communication Handicapped Children. So you can tell that's an older title that was used, but this program has been around for a long time. And it's highly visual teaching methodology that promotes a clear understanding of expectations, activities, and schedules in a structured environment. So the structured teaching promotes independence by utilizing strategies that align with the strengths and the needs of the students in that classroom. When you walk into a structured classroom, you're not only hearing the teacher give instructions or talk about an assignment or redirect students, you're also seeing visual supports that align with what that teacher is saying so that students fully understand the expectations and that environment becomes more predictable for the students. Structured teaching is based on four core components. The physical structure of the classroom, which is the foundation of structured teaching. Whenever a teacher is establishing a structured environment, that physical structure helps students to anticipate what is expected and to predict what will be happening during instruction that day. So that physical environment is step one. Visual schedules are critical for implementing learning within a structured classroom. So again, it lends itself to that predictability, that visual support. So when students look up, they know where and when they have to complete an activity. It also reduces anxiety, specifically for children with autism. And when there's reduced anxiety, there's reduced challenging behaviors. It includes work systems. Um, work systems are clearly defined systems for students to complete work independently. So they use a technique where you move from left to right. The work is visually represented here. You complete a task and you put it in your finished basket. So these are activities that students can move toward independence because they have the system set up for them wherein they can work while the teachers in the classroom and the paraprofessionals are working with other students on the direct instruction. Um, and finally, establishing that routine through visual structures. Again, you're gonna hear visual a lot today because it is all about how those visual supports can structure the environment. Students with autism have difficulty organizing and sequencing materials due to deficits in executive functioning. They also have difficulty interpreting the importance of information and give unneeded attention to details. So the visual structure adds that physical and visual system that builds understanding for students with communication deficits and challenging behaviors. So ultimately, structured teaching provides those structured activities to support executive function. It minimizes competing distractions. It brings clarity to expectations, allows for understanding and predictability, and it enhances that receptive language that students need to be able to understand what's happening in the classroom. It reduces anxiety and promotes independence. And ultimately, within the structured classroom, there's increased engagement and reduced challenging behaviors. And so the Lake Hills team, along with the district team, sat down together and talked about how can we work with our other school sites, especially our teachers who are serving students in our intensive support classes, um, in particular students with autism and certainly other students as well. Um, how can we provide them with that same opportunity to learn more about the structured classroom and implement that out there at our traditional school sites? And so we developed this pathway to a structured classroom, and you have a copy of that in front of you, but I'm gonna walk you through each of the steps. So the first step, if a school-based administrator, a teacher, another support staff on a school campus believes that a classroom could benefit from some intervention from our structured classroom team, um, they complete a district behavior support team request form. Now, this form has been used throughout the year for school-based personnel to make requests for assistance from our department. But we've, um, we've revised it a little bit to be able to identify those relevant pieces that might be, might require that the structured classroom team be involved. So the first step is to fill out that form, and it's reviewed by, by one of our district staff, ESE staffing specialists. And what they're going to do is they're gonna review that request to determine, is the structured classroom team needed? Or are there other supports that really need to be sent out to this school? So we wanna make sure that that structured classroom team has focused work to do in those classrooms where their, students are having the most significant behavioral challenges and teachers need that extra support. Um, once that's reviewed by a district's program specialist, then the ESE staffing specialist will contact the structured classroom team for them to implement any supports that are needed. Uh, step two. So the first step for the teacher, that identified teacher, is actually going to visit Lake Hills. And they're gonna be able to walk through and spend time in the structured classrooms at that site. Once they've seen the classrooms, they're gonna sit, they're gonna discuss and review the techniques that they observe, and then they're gonna devise an action plan. So they're gonna sit down with that structured classroom team and develop an action plan. And that action plan is gonna be based on that teacher's identified need, not just what the structured classroom team is recommending, recommending, but what that teacher sees as a need in his or her classroom. Um, and that will be based on that best practices indicator list that I gave you. And we're gonna, um, I think I may have skipped that one on the slide. So the best practices indicator for structured classrooms, as you can see, it has the four core components that were listed on the previous slide. Let me go back to that for just a second. Um, these four core components. But what the Lake Hills team did is they did some research and they added some other indicators that are based on best practices for structured teaching and to make sure that all of the elements needed for a structured classroom were in place. So they've added some things like communication. Um, what does communication look like in the classroom? What does classroom management look like? What are those visual supports look like when we're trying to reinforce appropriate behaviors? And then, of course, teaching time. So once they've developed that action plan based on the best practices indicator, steps three A and three B actually occur at the teacher's school site. So they've come to Lake Hills, they've observed the model classroom, they've developed their action plan. Now the structured classroom team goes to their school. Um, day two, the structured classroom team is gonna do some observations. They're gonna review the plan and strategize implementation. Day three, they're gonna put the plan into action and support the staff through modeling of the structured classroom. And then on day four, they're gonna allow the staff in that classroom to actually implement those strategies that they've talked about, implement that action plan that's been developed. And then at the end of that day, they'll do a debrief on the best practice, and the best practices indicator will be reviewed again. And part of that day, they do identify any resources that those teachers might need to be able to fully implement the structured classroom, and they make sure that those resources get to the teachers. On day four, um, the, the structured classroom team is then going to really make a plan for ongoing assistance. We know that four days is not enough, uh, to be able to fully implement new learning. And so that's where the district team can come in and support and help with that follow-up. So there are regularly scheduled visits to that classroom to look at that teacher's action plan, to help with implementation, to provide any other resources that are needed. Um, and those dates will be set up by the structured classroom team. Um, and, uh, Jean Grady did develop a Google Classroom for all teachers who've received this training, and really any teacher who'd like access to it can have access to this Google Classroom. And within the Google Classroom, each best practice indicator is a module. And with each module, there's a PowerPoint presentation and resources that align with that work. Um, the Google Classroom is a tremendous resource, and she did a phenomenal job putting that together. There are also some video models for some of the strategies to, so that teachers can go back and watch some of the strategies being implemented. So that Google Classroom is an important resource. And to support, uh, the structured classroom team, which consists right now of Jean Grady, uh, Dr. Cheryl Bishop, and Janessa Keiser, they're all Lake Hills staff, um, we have district personnel. And then based on what the needs are of that teacher, once the structured classroom team leaves, we have ESE program specialists, board certified behavior analysts, speech-language pathologists that have specializations in understanding assistive and augmentative communication. Um, and we also have four itinerant behavior support teachers that can do the follow-up work in those classrooms. In addition to the training that they receive for the structured classroom, that structured classroom team can also recommend other types of training for that teacher or the paraprofessionals in that classroom to help support the implementation of the program, such as using pictures or augmentative devices for communication, crisis prevention techniques, verbal de-escalation strategies, um, and how to implement, or maybe how to implement the district behavior level system. So we have people ready to support based on the recommendations of that structured classroom team. And then, of course, professional learning opportunities have been provided and are upcoming. And so intensive support teachers have already received an overview of the structured classroom. Elementary school principals, um, Ms. Carnegie actually scheduled the last learning walk at Lake Hills School for elementary school principals, and they were able to walk through those structured classrooms and see them working. Um, and they also received that overview of the structured classroom. ESE school specialists received the overview. Um, the Lake Hills team has already provided support to multiple schools. So we've rolled out the implementation, um, which was great that we were able to do that the last couple of months of school, cause we can see what it's going to look like and who's going to be needed to prepare us more for the next school year. And then we have summer sessions scheduled at Lake Hills in June for up to sixty teachers and TAs. And then we'll offer sessions August, on the August and September PD days and the October TA-PD day. And ultimately, um, when this structured teaching plan is in place and fully implemented with fidelity, we do see a reduction in behaviors and increase in engagement. We see students that are, uh, comfortable in the classroom, who want to engage in the work and learn to work independently.
And when that happens, it will also help to teacher retention. Um, I think that will go up as well, as, as we know that this is, um, especially those teachers in our intensive support classrooms, um, they need a lot more training, a lot of support. I think, um, often the, the behaviors are quite significant. And so I, I know that they, um, as I said, the support team has already been in a number of classrooms and, and I've seen and heard evidence of some of the changes that have been made, um, for teachers and for students. And so it's, it's exciting work, and I wanna thank you, Melissa, for you and your team, and to Dr. Myers for leading it. Um, and really just finding a solution to something that we know that we, we just had to find, um, some alternatives, cause what was available just wasn't working. And then I, I think it really came down to that training and support. Um, and Dr. Myers was the first to say to me, stop sending me the kids. I'm at capacity. Send me the adults, and let's work to support the adults. And just the going in and working side by side with a teacher in that coaching model, we know is the best professional development. Um, and so I wanted to offer to you all, um, Lake Hills is open all summer. They'll have the training going on for the sixty or more teachers, as well as our teacher assistants that are going to be trained this summer. We'll welcome you all anytime the classrooms are operational. She's got the thirteen model classrooms, just to see it in action. It looks like it's so much, but when you see it, you see that it is not as overwhelming as it might appear on paper. Um, and I also wanna put a plug in for our education foundation. You already know how wonderful they are. You hear all that they're doing. Often they do things that you may not even know about. And one of the things that they're working on is, first of all, for our teacher focus groups or advisory committees, they provided a gift card for every single teacher that has been attending, just to compensate them for their time and to say, thank you on, on my behalf. Um, so I wanna say thank you to the foundation for doing that. But they're also now working on a grant to help with supplies for the structured classroom. So if a teacher goes in and sees, well, I'm going to need this type of furniture, I'm gonna need this, these materials for work systems or stations, um, they're putting together kind of a standardized package base. They're going to Lake Hills to talk to the teachers and see what it is that they need, so that they can create some type of a package to be able to say, um, for every teacher that completes the training, you're going to get the package of materials that you're gonna need for your classroom to implement. So they're working on that now. And I think they, if they haven't been out to Lake Hills, they're going out there over the next week or two to start working on the grant that they're gonna be writing. So, um, so.
And I will give you access to the PowerPoint, which has some additional links where, with examples to kind of give you an idea of what those visual supports look like, if you're interested in, in looking into that more.
Just go see it. It's, it's, it's great.
Any questions?
Of course, of course.
I just wanna tell you, um, this is like a dream for me. Um, I would go back over forty years ago when I was a intern in speech path, and my very first little girl, Tam, was autistic. For four years, they thought the girl was deaf. And I walked into the room and she began throwing things at me. And later, uh, in one of my principalships, I had four autistic units on my campus. So to me, this sounds like a little version of heaven here in educational land. Um, so I am just so grateful to the people that have made this possible. And I would love to attend some of the training and see what it really looks like and just imagine myself thirty-five years ago and how wonderful it would have been had I had those things. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to talking to you more about it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, believe it or not, we're not quite done with three point oh one.
No, we've got the last group coming now.
So I'm wondering if, uh, if you all want to pause in three point oh one or take our restroom break afterwards?
I, it's, I need to go.
Okay, we'll take a pause, allow you all to get set up, and we'll, uh, we'll recess for five minutes. Uh,
Thank you.
Stay right in this chair. Stuck out early.
Bill's not here and he's... Well, we'll come back to order. Al, thank you for that much-needed quick break and we'll continue topic 3.01. Looks like this one's going to involve some intervention.
It sure will. Good morning Chairman Dodd, Superintendent Carnegie and school board members. I am excited to be here today to share with you an overview of the intervention teacher advisory committee. And of course alongside me is our assistant superintendent for teaching, learning and leadership, Amy Cockroft, as well as Mrs. Savannah Phail, who is joining us. She's a teacher, an ELA teacher at Taverri's Middle School, so we're really excited to have her here, kind of representing the group and she'll be sharing some of her experiences Down arrow, there we go. So we'll start just of course by recognizing our committee members. We did, just due to the nature of interventions at elementary versus the structure and process at middle and high school, we did meet separately. Once our first meeting group was with the elementary team and then with middle and high school. But these were some amazing educators who just came together, such problem solvers, really critically thinking about the structures that they have in place at their schools currently for intervention, brainstorming what those strengths are in those current systems and then taking a look at what are some of the next steps in regards to some challenges and how we can support their work moving forward. So really want to thank them for their time, both at their schools and the time that they spent serving on the committee as well. So as we started our work together, we really wanted to spend some time building shared knowledge. We felt that that was very important to make sure that when we were talking about intervention, we were really sure that we were talking about the same thing. As a district, we know that we've used the research from learning by doing for our implementation around the PLC process and around our practices in order to become a model PLC district. And in learning by doing, we spent a little time just reading and refreshing on how intervention aligns to those four PLC process critical questions, specifically the questions three and four around what do we do when students don't learn and what do we do when they do learn? So we looked at the research and we spoke a lot with PaaS and with the grading groups prior to our group about the why, right? So we spent some time in the why, why that system of intervention, why should, why does research show that we need a system for intervention within our school district and within our schools? And what are those key points of a systematic intervention to drive our work further and to support learning by addressing really what students are able to know and do to prove mastery? So connecting in Taking Action, the handbook for RTI at work, we really honed in on creating or using a common definition to make sure we have a shared definition of intervention to drive our work. And an intervention, according to Taking Action, is anything that a school does above and beyond what all students receive to help students, that certain students succeed academically. So we know that until all of our students are achieving that grade level mastery and proficiency, we as a district and as teachers and educators across the system have the responsibility to support those real-time and intensive interventions. So something that was really important to the work of the committee was viewing this as a continuous cycle, right? And this is where, it starts at the core. We think of interventions as sometimes secondary tiers of support, but it really all starts at the core. And within this continuous cycle, the teams are selecting those and identifying those grade level essential standards, right? What is it that we need all students to know and to be able to do before they walk away from this grade level or this course? So those teams are identifying those essential standards, then they're starting to plan their instruction, introducing those learning targets and along the way, giving formative assessments, right? And you see how this cycle kind of repeats for additional learning targets. So as something new within that unit comes up, we've got an opportunity for students to receive another formative assessment so teachers can identify where are their strengths and where are we starting to see some need for individual interventions? And then you see that this continuous cycle moves on to the end of unit assessment where we can also analyze at that point, where are our students from this kind of more summative approach? Where are they at the end of the unit? But I think that one of the key things that the group really tuned into here is the notion that interventions, real-time interventions are part of a fluid cycle. We don't need to identify a student need for a quarter, for a whole semester and say, "This is what they need." Now they're here, they're going to receive this intervention for an entire nine weeks or for a semester. We're able to identify on a much more granular level, this is the area of need that they have within the essential standard, we're going to focus here on that instruction. Once the student has now had an opportunity for me to reteach, for them to relearn and for them to show mastery, we can move on and they're ready to either move on to perhaps they need another intervention in another essential standard or perhaps they need an extension, depending on the student needs at the time. So we think of this more as a proactive approach where we're not trying at the end of a unit to come back and identify what a student needs when we've gone too far in the instruction, but we're trying to identify it quickly in that learning progression so that we can hit on those student needs as they're occurring within the unit. And so digging a little bit deeper into intervention, we really connected this learning formula to our work because this helps us understand as well why we need an intervention. And this learning formula, the QI stands for that quality instruction plus T, which is time, equals learning. So we know that if students are exposed to quality intervention, they have the time for that instruction as well, that learning will result. But when we think of it more from an intervention perspective or lens, we start to see the need for the V to come into play in this formula, where when quality instruction is varied according to the individual student need and that time is varied according to the individual student need, then that learning can result in constant learning, not just for some students who achieve, right, that standard or achieve that learning the first time and learn it the first time, but for all students to be able to have what they need to be successful with that essential standard. So we know that some students do require an opportunity to have that additional time or instruction to learn the essential curriculum and we want to make sure that we're really systematically approaching it that way through intervention at our schools. And of course, we also know, I spoke to this just a moment ago, but an effective intervention system also includes that extension of learning because we do have students, as they have mastered the standard, what do they need to support their next steps in instruction and in their instructional pathway as well? So our advisory group really started to dig in to the quality instruction formula and what results in constant learning for all of our students because that's our goal, high levels of achievement for all of our students in Lake County. And they took some time to really work to see what areas are working and what does the district need in terms of next steps to support this work? So I think Savannah's going to talk a little bit about what this looks like on our school team.
So I'm extremely interactive, so I would like to poll the room really quickly. If you had something that you're struggling with, because we all have those areas, unless you're gifted and everything, then don't talk to me. But if you were struggling in a specific area, what would it take for you to be able to reach proficiency? Okay? So if it would take extended time, raise your hand. Anybody extended time? Okay? How about being able to talk it out with somebody, someone else who's working through it, raise your hand. Okay? How about just being able to get that one-on-one, maybe with the instructor? So who in here would definitely learn from that? And then we also have those students just like us who need trial and error. They need to make mistakes, they need to be able to see the mistakes and then they need the practice to be able to solidify that. Well, hopefully that is what can happen in those intervention times. Luckily, being a teacher in the secondary level, we've been able at Taverri's Middle School to implement that during our flex time. But we were not able to figure out, okay, what's the what? What are we going to intervene on? Who's going to do the intervention? All these questions that we came up with in here, it's all part of that PLC process. And during, after the PM two of the ELA FAST test, we were able to kind of pilot a lot of the things that we talked about in this committee and it was very exciting to see the results. So as a PLC, we met, we went through, we picked out our essential standard for a specific unit, we chose our cumulative formative assessments or common formative assessments together and then we were able to look at the data of all the students from a grade level, not just one class, not just my class, but speak to each other about it. We were able to talk about and pinpoint the parts of the essential standards that students were struggling with. Our school started out really low with reading, I'm not going to lie. PM one, our growth was the same number of points as the state, you know, we went up three points to PM two. And then when we got to PM three, after we began implementing these interventions, in the difference between one performance measure, we went up seven points and that was just incredible because we're now closing the gap. These interventions worked. But the other thing that we had to take into account, as you're going to see in the guiding document, is that everyone has to buy into it. It has to be the entire grade level team and we can't, we have to stop seeing students as my student. Every single student is our student. Every seventh grade student needs to be able to read, I don't care if they're on my roster or not. And also recognizing that as teachers, we each have strengths and weaknesses. I might be better at teaching a certain standard than my cohort and she might be better at small groups and then, you know, the other teachers. So it really, recognizing that, we were able to divide up our kids that way based upon those CFAs and then taking that information, putting the kids into groups and then in our different rooms, allowing them to have their interventions in different ways. We had one teacher that was great at having like the classroom where he would present the information and, you know, talk through it with the kids and they were fine. And then the classroom next to me was all about the small groups and they were able to get it that way. And then in my classroom, it was a lot of, "Okay, people can get up and move around because you make me uncomfortable when you're this quiet." Like, so it's, you know, but every student needs a different kind of teacher and you know what, maybe if they're not even on that teacher's roster, they can still learn from them. So we were very encouraged by what we saw and we're excited that it all works together with everything we've been working towards in the district.
So when the committee came together for the first meeting, after really building that shared knowledge, then we discussed the current intervention systems that are in place at schools. Committee members had the opportunity to really share, like what are the successes and challenges that you're seeing and relate it back to that quality instruction formula. So you see in the four square, the quality instruction, time, learning and a box also to share challenges, but we did share those successes as well because it's amazing to hear things like what Savannah just shared and the successes that schools are having that we need to just leverage across the district as well. Each committee member then went back to their respective schools and they got feedback from their entire faculty via a survey. So again, we wanted to capture the voices of as many of our educators as we could to provide input into this group, knowing that we had powerful representatives at the table joining us and representing their schools at the committee. They still had the opportunity to provide input from all of the teachers at their schools. So when we came back for that second meeting, the group reviewed that data and then started that prioritization process. We talked about how grading, right, there's a list, there's things that we want to accomplish. Well, with intervention, there were many things that we want to accomplish as well. But we took a look at what were those survey result areas that kind of came, bubbled to the surface and then the group decided to narrow the focus to three. What are the first three things that we can work on to ensure, you know, that we're moving in the right direction and that we all have a common vision for intervention across the district?
I'll turn it over to you Savannah.
Right, so on this proof of life slide, as we called it earlier, you can see our middle and high school group working together through the questions that were posted on the previous slide. This time was absolutely invaluable to me because at the table, you're going to have, you know, the, they kept on calling it my intervention utopia because in my mind, there's nothing preventing it, it's all going to work, it's all positive, this is great. And then I'll have a realist next to me be like, "Um, what about like these actual kids?" So it was, it was wonderful to have the various viewpoints. The posters that you can see on the wall in the background show those things that we did identify as a need for those successful intervention systems, based on information as she talked about, gathered from the surveys from all teachers across the district. The challenge became, how do we create something that is usable for every single campus? You know, because like we talked about, we all have these different cultures, we all have different needs, you know, you talk about PaaS, no matter what you're talking about, you've got those differences that we have to grapple with. But we were able to prioritize based on the teacher feedback, what we felt was commonly occurring regardless of which campus we were on and what grade level it was and what the subject area was. So in our group, we did have teachers of various subjects and backgrounds. So this was an opportunity to hear ideas, inspiration, feedback and a little bit of reality as I frequently need from this group and it was, it was great. We're able to identify which parts of a successful intervention system needed more work, needed more conversation and needed more research. And for me personally, the Taking Action book was incredibly valuable. And we talked about which things were going to be necessary for the basic necessities to get started. A lot of us creatives, once that ball gets going, we're kind of like up there in the details when really we need to boil it down to, okay, here's your common steps and it was actually, I believe at this point, when we talked about, what's our vision? We have to have a vision for interventions, we have to have a mission statement for interventions. We need those objectives and we need those guiding questions because if you walk into one of our classrooms, you say, "Okay, well, what's our learning goal?" What's our, so we tried to use that same type of format to assist us here. So then we took all of this information, we put it back together into a doc, which was awesome to watch because we did have a lot of reading and ELA teachers in there, so we absolutely just typed all over these living documents that you see here. so we absolutely just typed all over these living documents that you see here. And then in our third meeting, we were able to work together to edit, add comments, and make suggestions in the document. This one is from the elementary group. You can see we had it divided up by the questions, and then we would add our suggestions on the side, we asked all types of questions. This is the, from the secondary group, and it was just, I could, it was crazy to watch in real time all these things popping up. And then these two had to grapple through and edit all of those together. But it was so meaningful to see it all come together, these collective thoughts, ideas, and needs to support the whole district. We learned from each other and were able to work cohesively to ensure the system could be improved. And that was probably my favorite part of the teacher advisory councils was, it didn't matter if I was coming from a high school or a middle school or what I was teaching, every single teacher that was in there was on board. Every single teacher that was there was working towards the same goal. So we learned from each other through that.
And that's what we have there.
All right. So then you start to see some of the final results of their work in the intervention guide where their, the goal and the work comes, all their ideas started coming together into a guide that we could use across the district. So I think what's important about the guide is, no matter where you are as a school, as Ms. Phail talked about, there are opportunities for you to jump in and do some observations or starting points that you would have, whether it's the collaborative teacher team or the district-wide, school-wide actions that they would have. And then in addition, there's the additional resources. And I think this might be one of my favorite things because watching, stepping, sitting back and watching the sharing that they did, and when they got the information, the realization that everybody in their school wasn't doing it the same way, and everybody across our district wasn't doing it the same way, and therefore a need for a committee like this and how important it was, started coming to light. And seeing them share their ideas and learn from each other was really powerful for us to be able to sit back and watch. But the additional resources in here, not only other documents from Learning by Doing or Taking Action, but there are school-wide documents that our schools use to implement their intervention system. So they could take those PowerPoints when they used for training, make copies and make them more suitable for their staff, but have a starting place for that, to be able to grow their program to a research-based effective system as well. And then also the other thing, and I think this goes back to what you guys had been talking about earlier, and the time that teachers have, one of the things that they said is it just takes so much time to do these intervention lessons. So they are uploading lessons into these shared drive folders, and then we will have staff align them to essential standards and link them right on the blueprints for easy access for our teachers to be able to have, just to reduce the time. Like practicality is, yes, we all want to make sure that our kids learn it and that they learn it as soon as we see, but then having the resources available to our teachers are very important as well. So from there, as their like next step, so we are providing that guide to streamline the process, just like the other committees said, this is a work in progress. We can continuously update this guide and add in more details as we need to, provide professional learning to build understanding and intervention system and the PLC process. We have opportunities over, throughout the year as well as in the summer. So this summer, we're going to be working with our leadership teams and our leaders in summer leadership program to go deeper into this, to make sure that as a system, we are all coming in with some of that same foundational information, and then having those resources that they need for those grade level standards. So I think that we have work to do in this aspect as well as the others, but I think you can also see how they go together. When Ms. Obana talked about that learning cycle, one of the biggest things in that that also addresses grading, in my opinion, if we can preventively address the needs of a child before it's something that's going into the grade book and reteach and relearn as part of that systematic process, that helps with that logistics of all the different timeframes and grading that need to happen as well. And then we know that our schools do have some time built in the day for intervention when it does need to go beyond those daily interventions based on those formative assessments that teachers use as well. So I think that we all found great value in this process, no matter which committee people served on, and the work that's moving forward is, as it does, we do need to continue to grow, but I think everybody would agree, these are worthwhile areas for us to continue to beat out and work together. And we have such amazing teachers as, I'm so proud, as I'm sitting here listening to each one of them speak, that can speak about this work as well and be a part of it. So do you have any questions for us?
What does eliminate below grade level learning tracks mean?
So that would mean like a child, just because they came in perhaps, say, a level one the previous year, that we're automatically going to pull them out of their core instruction and put them on a track where they're learning at something below grade level. That every child deserves core instruction on grade level if it's, if they don't have a, an IEP that indicates otherwise or something.
And I would also like to speak to that because that was one of the big ahas for the teachers, and that was why we wanted to put that continuous cycle in there as well, because I think that many times we see a label, unfortunately, whether it's level one or what have you, and we automatically assume, oh, well, that's an intervention student. This is where intervention gets a bad name. Intervention is supposed to be continuous and it's supposed to be for everyone, not just a specific group of students. Oh, they have intensive reading, that's their intervention. That doesn't work. So we have to see this as a cycle.
So you said intensive reading, so that's why I was curious. I'm like, are we getting rid of intensive reading instruction? Is that something that's?
So intensive reading instruction is an intervention class that would be for foundational needs for our secondary students. So they would be the ones that would be identified as needing some probably tier three. That's not necessarily part of their core instruction, they would still get core ELA.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm thinking about how this ties back to creating some time for teachers' critical, right? Especially when schools carve out this time where you can perform some intervention. I mean, obviously, you're doing intervention as well during your core instruction there, but thinking about that separate block of time that we've deliberately scheduled, wondering if there's maybe some guidance that you all might be able to provide to schools in that? Because I saw one of the comments here talked about, you know, that it'd be more effective if more people had participated so that you can reduce your group size. And, you know, so I asked some kids, random kids who happened to live in my house, I said, so what would make it more effective? And they said, you know, some of the popular teachers book out weeks in advance. And I was like, oh, okay. So, you know, they're signing up way in advance. By the time that comes around, they don't actually need the help anymore. I go, ah, so it's like the classic, I'm going to sign up for my doctor's appointment, four weeks from now, I'm not sick anymore, I may manage to get better, but you know, I still have this appointment on the books. Whereas, you know, that, so you can't get into some classes that you need to really spend the time with the teacher. Whereas others, they're like, I don't know, I don't know if they're just taking a free period all the time because they never have an intervention block available to us.
I'm glad you asked that because that's another thing for the teachers as well, especially as we're, you know, experimenting with the flex time manager scheduling and things like that. One of my favorite lines from Taking Action was, students who need intervention cannot be invited for intervention. They must be required. Because if we are saying that this is something that is important enough that we're going to intervene on it, and we have said this is an essential standard, it can't be optional. So these teachers need to have specific days a week where they have a list of students that must come for their, it's a class. It's a class, they come and they get their learning, but it also must be on a specific time cycle. And as was recommended by our resources, they recommend three weeks. So have a specific intervention group of students, do the three weeks with those students, but still have those time slots during the other days when you could take those other students that want to come in for, you know, other things.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I guess, how much invitation versus voice and choice that kids sometimes get. And I don't know if that varies a little bit based on middle school versus high school.
And school itself.
And school itself, right. You know, because there was a time where I had a kid who really needed, I was like, you need to be getting some extra intervention in math, and like, oh, well, that'll be next week on Thursday. Okay, that's a little far off, but, oh yeah, I only get, I only get to see that teacher once a week. I was like, okay.
That is, that did come up twice in the committee. That did come up in the committee too, and like, working through that system of making sure that we prioritize, but that it's as close to the time needed that a child needs. So those are all pieces that we have to continue to provide professional development and systematically find ways that work. And that doesn't always have to be your teacher either. Like, that's something some of the schools are learning. Like, if I have a math need and this teacher is, it's my teacher from last year and they can help me with that, then why shouldn't I be able to go to them or a different algebra teacher, whatever the case may be?
Yeah, I think that'd be, that'd be great. You know, maybe that would help eliminate the situation where kids are going to interventions that they don't necessarily need, whereas, I need to be there, but I only get that one once a week, I gotta go to this one.
We're excited that kids want to sign up for their intervention now. We have to work on making sure that they're going to the right one. Which is also why the PLC process is so important. All of the teachers should be working on the same essential standard at the same time. So then if I open up my flex time to any seventh grade ELA student, no matter which student it is, whether they're mine or not, I can help them with what they're working on because I recognize it. So making sure that all of our flex times are purpose-driven. Because a lot of the teachers, when we gave them flex time, they're like, well, what do I do with that? I'm a band teacher. Or, you know, just creating purpose in every aspect.
Yeah, sure.
I really, like, what resonates the most with me is that you talk about your instruction with a group of people, that you're looking at the same formative assessments, you're identifying trends with kids, and the strength that comes when the four of us can sit down and say, look what I did with main idea, look what you did with theme, look what you did with purpose, and how can we, how can I get my kids to you? And worked in that environment once, I was blessed to do that, and it changed the way that I looked at teaching. They weren't my kids anymore. It wasn't my classroom. It was, these are our fourth grade students and how are we moving them? And there was so much power in that. There was so much movement. When you've drank out of that Kool-Aid, you just, you can't go back. It's incredible, the work that you do when you, when you see the vision like that. So I really appreciate that being said here and the work that's being done towards that because when you've been part of it.
It's like he said, one teacher can't do it all.
One teacher can't do it all.
No, which really makes me just marvel at the work that's supposed to go into an intervention block. Because let's say I've got maybe 30 kids that come to my room, and you've got a question about this, you've got a question about, I don't know how you reconcile all of that and, you know, because if I do a structured lesson, maybe there were 27 kids who didn't need that, but the three did, but now if I spend all this time with these three kids, and I've got 27 kids with other questions, I don't know how you balance that, you know?
You have student experts in the room with you.
Well, that and I think it goes back to that essential standards piece, right? The superintendent has been working with us all year on, like, if we can start with that and identify those essential learnings that every child needs to have by the end of third grade or by the end of algebra, that would really help them to be successful in that class or the next class. And then we grade on that, we intervene on that, we comment formative on that, we plan on that. Like, I'm not saying we don't teach the other pieces, but that's what our collaborative team of teachers really focuses on, then that's where it eliminates 27 different questions because I don't understand this question on this assignment. Then it does really focus in on what do we want kids to learn and be able to do.
Some of the power of this work, and I, I'll be like, she's bringing it up again, because I think it just goes, it's just a testament to the work that these teachers have put into this, is we have a high school teacher, and I don't remember now, it was ninth or 10th grade that she was working with through their PLT, and they were all beginning teachers. And so what she realized through those conversations and looking at the process and the cycle was, there had to be some way that these teachers, they didn't know how to plan around it, they didn't know, you know, what, for them was one more thing on their plate to have to plan for interventions. So she took study sync, the ELA curriculum, and for every essential standard, she developed, it's a PowerPoint, and it's in the document, if you ever want to go take a look at it. Was it ninth or 10th grade?
Well, the reason why you're confused is she teaches 10th, but she did this with ninth grade. She saw the need in her school for some teachers that she wasn't even collaborating.
So she took each essential standard and she developed a separate lesson on that essential standard, like, here's your activity, here's your essential questions, like, here's your commentative, your formative assessment to assess that particular standard. And it is so scripted and so beautifully put together and totally aligned to the standard, and did that for every single unit for those teachers. And then I think she was working on 10th grade too. So we were able to take that. Now for every ninth grade ELA teacher, they have that document. And so, because one teacher realized the need, but it was the power of the conversations that we were like, well, she's already done this work. And that teachers began through this committee to be able to start developing those resources. So if you have a chance to go through that Google Doc, if you have access to it.
And our team did the same thing for seventh ELA, it's just, we were able to use our writing team time to do that. So it's, you know, using the time, because like you said, it's a time issue. So finding that time and being able to do it is wonderful.
The willingness to share those resources with the rest of the people in the district.
Yeah, you hate to have 40 schools all inventing their own wheel.
Right. Exactly.
When you've invented a good one, and it spins, let's share that with some of the others, you know?
But sometimes you have to be a part of the work.
Sometimes you've got to be a part of the work.
I feel like there's a lot of that, yes. That's really difficult because you are doing the same thing repeatedly, and I've felt that a little bit in the work that I do. But then they don't, there's no buy-in to it. I'm not going to go look at somebody else's Google Drive, you don't know where it came from, you don't know the work that was done. So to have the conversation around why and how, it just kind of helps people get into it. And then I think the shared resources become hugely beneficial when everybody can see the end goal. But the work at that level, at the teacher level, is so important.
Very true. All right. We got through 3.01.
3.01? I got 11.59, so we finished that in the morning.
I said it's 12. I know, we're leaving minus 30 minutes ago.
All right. It's all right, we'll make up the time in the air.
The reason why this was so important is because the other two items are connected to the work of the teacher advisory groups. I think now the next two items should be easy, hopefully, to go through. But we know that the work of the committees translated to changes to the People Progression Plan and to the Code of Conduct, as well as a very active legislative session. So as we know in this document, a lot of it is things that we did not invent, but are things that are new language from new laws. So I'm not sure who, what was the next?
So I think it's Code of Conduct next? Is that right? 3.02? Yeah. Sorry, you checked it off.
I have. We're on it. We're doing it.
Lost my agenda somewhere. It's all right. No, yours already helped me out. We're good.
Could you put the PowerPoint up, please, sir, for 3.02? Code of Conduct, the Code of Conduct.
You know she is super organized.
Okay. So superintendent kind of stole my thunder with saying a lot of the changes that I'll be bringing really are due to legislative updates. So we have very few local district changes this school year. So per the policy, anytime that revisions are proposed, I have to bring these changes to you for your review and consideration. I don't think that's the presentation. You all want me to wait or continue? Continue, okay. I got the, go ahead. So you do have, you do have a copy at your station, so a summary of the proposed revisions, again, are due to statute, board rule, and then we have some language cleanup throughout the document. Thank you. We're good now. Thank you. So the items that are due to statute changes are there for your reference, but when I go through the revisions document, I'll cover them in more detail, but this just gives you a broad view of what items will be proposed for legislative statute changes. And then we have some administrative rule changes to some definitions for this upcoming year. And again, some continued rule changes for Cesar. And those are the offense codes that were impacted by the new legislative changes. And then these are the items that we will be making revisions to as a district team, just again, some language cleanup and some alignment to either statutes or board rules. And again, always like to thank those committee members that work with the team. Mr. Sellus led this work this year, so he organized the committee, brought everyone together, reviewed all of the proposed revisions, got feedback, and pulled all of this information together. So I would like to thank those committee members for their participation in this process as well. So I don't think there are any questions, so I'll go ahead and jump into the revisions document. And, sir, there's a document, should be an attachment for revision sheet as well. But I think the board also has it at their station, so I'll go ahead and get started. So on page one, there's one simple clarification there in the introduction section. I did get some feedback from Mr. Myers there, so that language will be changing. So when you do see it on, for tentative approval, it will be slightly different, so I will go ahead and read what he submitted. So in the introduction section, it will say So in the introduction section, it will say, the term "schools" shall include, without limitation, any Lake County Schools grounds, campus, facility, or bus, and any other physical location at which a student is attending or participating in any activities sponsored by Lake County Schools, or receiving services related to education under the direction of Lake County Schools officials, officials. So that is what that language will be when you see it for tentative approval. So what you have now is not the correct new language, but that will be updated.
So that encompasses, like, if you go on a field trip, that's a school-sponsored activity, but clearly not a campus.
Just wanted to clear that up. The language was not as clean as we like it, no, no imagination. These, these are the expectations. So just through conversations with schools, and then sometimes with parents, we wanted just to make that clear. So our attempt was, I think, okay, but when Mr. Myers took a look at it, he added some more language to that. So that's that proposed rationale. The next item is rights and responsibilities. This is one of the items that I just shared with you that is due to a proposed legislative update. They have not approved this language, but Student Services wanted to go ahead and add it in there in the event the approval happens before we get to first read. So we've added it in here, but we are waiting for the approval of that language. If they don't, we'll take it out, but it's here about the age.
Right, Senate Bill nine ninety-two. When I, when I looked at it last night, I thought it said it died in committee, right? Good legislative sessions, ever, right?
Okay, well.
It's over, yeah.
Okay, so the information I had was, it's a proposed change, so it's actually approved?
No, I, I, I saw that nine ninety-two died in committee.
Oh, okay.
Died in the.
Well, that's good to know. I'll make a note.
Education Committee.
All right.
That doesn't mean that that language didn't make it into another bill.
Yeah, I'll just put a question to verify before tentative approval.
Yeah. You know, some of those bills are pretty lengthy, so nine ninety-two very well could have been absorbed somewhere else. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
But thank you for letting me know. Anyway, we just need to double-check that. Okay, we'll do that. And then the next item is, again, just an update and clarification to some of our current language, to be more clear. And it lends to the changes in the below about tardy to school. Again, it seems very simple, but we want to be explicit in, in our wording. So we added the words tardy to school. And then in number seventeen, we added a statement about a student is considered tardy to school when a student arrives to school without valid documentation from parent or guardian, and then repeated tardies may be considered habitual truancy. And this will align to a new code that you will see on page three when I get there.
So you can essentially only get one tardy per day. You're not getting a tardy to each class period if you're not there when that class starts?
Well, in elementary, you can get probably one, but in secondary, I can be tardy to multiple classes.
Because they're now separated, tardy to school versus tardy to class.
I just didn't know if that to-school language changed, how that would go at the, the middle and high level.
It, it will, it will. And that's one of the reasons this came up, I think, and when I get to page three, it'll, it'll make more sense, because of some of the conversations we had with schools about, particularly what you're saying. If I'm tardy to school, we only had one code. And it was hard for people to know if you're tardy to class, or they're tardy to school, which one is it? If I'm looking to see what your need is, or what the issues are, the definitions and wording that we had did not allow for schools to be able to pull out if it was some, was two different things. So when we get to page three, you'll see why we created a different code to build it more clear about that here.
What I, what I thought was interesting about this tardy to school is that that offense could land a kid in detention for being tardy to school, for an unexcused tardy. Now, let's say, mom is your ride, she's running late that morning. Do you get a detention because she's running late for an unexcused tardy? According to our Code of Conduct, yes, possibly. Mom just caused you detention. And so.
And that's, and that's happened before, you know, where we encourage parents.
That's happened to my child.
Thank you for saying that, that's happened to mine, too.
That's bizarre.
But we, we have to work with our parents and encourage them.
Because kid doesn't really control that. And because of that, kid's paying the price for parents' actions.
And then, and parents count out, too, because now you've got to come pick them up. So it's.
How often do we do that? How often do we assign kids detention for being late to school?
I will, I'd have to do a little research that, on that, Mr. Dow, but I, I could not tell you, to be honest, how many times this happens, if, if it's because of the parent.
Yeah, because you know, there's a difference in that, okay, kid drives themselves to school, they just feel like sleeping in, hits the snooze away too many times. That, that's a different story than, my mom is my ride to school, and I had to leave when, when, I can't, I'm, I'm twelve, I don't have a driver's license, you know?
Right.
But don't you need the three for it to trigger that unexcused absence or the detention?
He's talking, we're talking unexcused absence would be the three, but he's talking like, for detention.
Individual class.
Yeah, an individual tardy to school. You know, I was also interested on that, I guess, on that same note, in our, in our Code of Conduct as well, that students that drive themselves, it says that they must go from home straight to school. And so that they're not allowed to stop at Starbucks on the way, according to our Code of Conduct. Did you know that?
I have to look at that a little bit closer. Let me make a note of that. You're talking in the student driving section?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, you know, it was all related in my mind, as it had to do with tardies. You know, one thing, I just kind of, kind of kept following that rabbit hole of, okay, kids late to school, why? Okay, they're driving themselves. And then I went and read that section in greater detail and realized that, okay, they're not allowed to make a pit stop on the way to Starbucks, according to our Code of Conduct.
I'll go back and look at that language, and see if that's something that's kind of been there for a while, and just.
Now you got detention because they see you walking with your Starbucks cup, you're like, you, you're on time, but you stopped somewhere.
But you stopped. And maybe they did, maybe they didn't, maybe somebody, maybe somebody brought it to them.
I don't know.
So, but I'll go back and.
I just don't know if we had control over that.
Yeah, I'll go back and take a look at that and kind of see where that came from.
Okay.
So I think we're done with that page, and if I can remember, there we go. So at the top of page two, there's statute changes there that impacts that definition and support. So it explains that if a student is in need of small group or counseling services, that we must get consent and permission from the parent there. So that's just aligning to statute. The next item, technology, is another change in rule, and the rule is stated there, and it talks about the utilization of student data and required materials. And I know that conversation has been going around quite a bit in other, in other meetings. And this information will be added to the opt-out form. So I just wanted to let you all know that that addition will be, will be there as well to the form, to capture that, so that parents are aware that if they do not want their children to have access to these items, they need to complete that form and have, so the school have that on record. The next item is just a clarification from the Student Services area in the prescription medication section. And then the next item also is non-prescription medication clarification in that section as well. And the next item on page three is a word that I cannot say. I have practiced it, but I don't know how to say it. I don't know if it's naloxone, but yeah. It's a, also a change to legislation there, and it talks about that we will maintain an opioid antigen on our campuses in the event we have to utilize that. It's a little unnerving, but it's where we are, and that we will be having that, but we, there's also district procedures in place in the event that has to be administered on a campus.
On that one, it, it does say may. Is it supposed to say may, or is it supposed to say will, or must, or?
It says may.
Yeah.
It says may.
The district must have, or each school? Is it every school? Is it middle and high? Is it?
It does not specify, so when I read this, it is making me believe that it would be every school. But I can clarify with Dr. Landry, she had to leave, and she apologized, but I can clarify with her if it's secondary only, or if it's elementary, because it says, it doesn't specify a, a level, a level here. Does someone else know?
I know it's middle and high, that, and I don't know, she met with all those school nurses, and I know that they were all on board, they've received the appropriate training, and all of our SROs, SRDs also carry it with them or in a vehicle.
Okay, so it's all, okay. And the next item is again, another legislative change in statute about counseling services. I mentioned that earlier, just happened to be in two places, and we're just capturing that change. The next one, bus suspension and revocation, it was just an omission on our part. We left out one level of disciplinary offenses, and it was brought to our attention, that we referenced other levels, but we left off level four, for some reason, all these years. But it popped out, and so we wanted to clean that up as well. So the tardies to class goes back to that first conversation where we're cleaning up tardiness, because again, it was just that one offense code that said tardiness. It did not clarify tardy to what. And again, through conversations with administrators about needing more clean information, that is where these changes are coming from. So cleaning up tardies to tardy to class to tardy to school. Now, when I'm looking, if I'm working with a student, I know what it is. You're tardy to school versus tardy to class. What is the issue? Is it the parent dropping you off, or are you hiding in the bathroom? It was hard to make that determination with just the, the previous definition there.
You know, in, in this particular section, I bring it up every year, so this is the moment, I'm going to bring it up, but I almost feel like there's a sense of hope this go-around, based on some of our conversation in three point oh one, that the level-one offenses have such a variety of, of offense level to it. Tardy versus plagiarism. Same level of offense, your consequence for that could be a warning or an in-school suspension. So I guess technically, you could in-school suspend a kid for being tardy, because that's, that's in the, in your grade.
Yes, sir.
And you could give a warning to a kid who plagiarized. To me, that seems backwards, but if you follow our Code of Conduct, that's permissible. But maybe my sense of hope now is this discipline ladder, that could make some, create some consistency or guidelines, sentencing guidelines, if you will, and you know, and I know, you don't want to make it so rigid, where you're locked into every kid, you know, each situation's a little bit different, right? And you have to evaluate that, and you have to evaluate the whole child, and you know, what's appropriate. But maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's my sense of hope.
And, and that is the goal. That is the goal, to create some consistency within disciplinary assignments, but also some clarity as well. Because one offense, yeah, it might say that shopping list of things in the code, but as an administrative team or leadership team, I would say, okay, tardy versus cheating, one might be parent conference or warning, where the first offense on one may be in-school suspension, to your point. So it does hopefully get us to where some things you've been talking about for a few years.
And, and building off that briefly, could we look at implementing similar to the three tardies to school as an unexcused absence? Maybe three tardies to class gets you a detention? I mean, can there be some guidelines in there as to how that, how that reads and how that's handled? Because like, we were talking about with Mr. Felton or his team earlier, just trying to get those guidelines in place as a minimum, I think will help this be more clear as we keep moving forward.
Is that something you want to add it here?
Just a suggestion, but just an idea of it, just as may, it may be assigned to detention or placed in existing alternative program. How many? Can we quantify that in some way? Because I think we certainly want to nip that, being tardy to class, but what does that penalty look like?
So then on, on the flip side of that, okay, so now if I'm a school, and I say, this is, third period is my tardy sweep, everybody who's late to third period gets a detention, does, which, I've always wondered about that practice to begin with, you know, because I always get, there's always the one kid, who's like, I've never been late in my life, and it just statistically, it, it was improbable, but I was late to that one class, now suddenly I've got.
That's where I think the number comes in.
Three hours of Saturday school.
Can I give you another scenario as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm a student athlete, you know that, I'm very aware of that. She maintains that she's never made a B in her life on a report card, ever. And softball games that are out of town, she's gone, we don't get home till eleven-thirty at night, and the next morning, she's like, I'm caught up, I can go on. The teachers have made that curriculum super accessible to her, so she can actually rest and not get up at six-thirty in the morning, and probably has more tardies than she should, but her average at the end of the year was a hundred and seven. So should she have to go?
I don't know how you get a hundred and seven in the first place.
I'm telling you, if you want me to.
I mean, I believe you, but it's just out of a hundred, I don't know how you get to a hundred and seven.
I don't know either, but. So I just.
It's a good point, yeah.
I would, I'm telling you that you would take a student who is an exceptional student, and she would have detention a lot in the spring. I'll just put that out there, I don't care.
Just trying to prioritize that quality instruction time, too. So what does that look like?
Yes.
Do we, do we have a stance at the board?
Just a suggestion, so it can be overruled on that easily. I think this is probably to our discussion itself.
Have, have we had this be a problem? I mean, I know how schools handle it, but are there administrators who are struggling with this?
I won't say.
Are there parents who are upset?
Problem? I think it was more to get information and data to be clean, because when we're looking at trying to provide interventions for students, if we're looking at attendance, right, is your attendance is your problem, where you're tardy to class? That way, if I'm sitting down with a student, and I, we'll use third period, why are you always tardy to Ms. Banks's third period class? What is going on? Do we need to talk about something? That other code just didn't lend itself to that? So that's where this came from, was really trying to drill down and determine students' needs. And if we're looking at, like, the night school, let's take that for example, we'll talk about the high school scenario. If I'm trying to figure out what kids would benefit from an altern, an alternative schedule, well, you go to every other class, but you just can't get here in the morning. This code kind of helps with some of these decision-making. So it wasn't an issue, it was more of trying to be a little bit cleaner in, in our data, and how we can help students. And that was some feedback Mr. Sellus got when he was trying to work with administrators. And, and so we took that feedback, and when I brought it to Cabinet, and when he shared it with the committee, they were like, this is good, because it will help us know what our students' attendance issues are, and how we may need to address them if it is mom, you know, you know? Or is it just mom drops student off, and student's kind of ducking out to class? Or if there's an issue in the classroom, where they're escaping the academic piece, too. So it would lend itself to different conversations. So that's kind of where this came from.
I think it just shows you how complicated all of these topics are, because while you want to look at the whole child, you also don't want to create a sense of favoritism, right? But if you put some hard numbers in, suddenly some situations become, you know, you're constrained, and you don't have the flexibility anymore. So, you know, one of my kid's classes, it's quarter-mile distance, and the teacher says, I'm not going to mark any of you late, we're going to start two minutes late every single day. That's what they do, because they're expecting that. He's like, boy, I'm really hoping that that's not my lockout period, because, because we're told we can be there two minutes, because nobody's going to get there on time if they're coming from that other place.
I think, too, on the flip side, with that, not having the numbers may create more of favoritism, where it is, you may get a detention for this, where if it's not as clear.
Yeah, you got that challenge, too.
That's written. Again, just a suggestion, but I'm, I'm good with whatever.
I support the cleanliness of the language.
Yeah.
And I can say, like, I don't, I don't, in my experience, everybody has been very reasonable about it, even with the, with absences at the elementary school, with mom dropping kid, like, I've never felt personally attacked, or whatever, for my kid being late to school, or for, you know, them missing stuff. So I do think they, our administrators and our tenant offices do a great job.
Parents saying, they're marking my kid tardy, because I'm dropping, like, we haven't had that phone call.
Because they haven't gotten detention because of it, even though they can.
Right.
They can.
So that's where, that's where I'm wondering about this, this discipline ladder, you know, if that helps address that kind of thing of, okay, even though you can give that, even though you can suspend the school, suspend the kid in school, come on, don't do that for a tardy.
That may help, helps it a little bit.
Well, we don't suspend for a tardy.
You know, you can't
Well, no, that's an option.
For attendance.
Yes, in-school suspension is a Level One offense.
In-school suspension.
That's right.
Well, there's a distinct difference between
Statutorily, you can't do out of school, but in school. Because again, if it goes back to some of the things that Mr. Larkin was talking about, maybe some of those conversations in past. Again, don't know. But I'm just giving some examples of what can be done, especially at the secondary level, if there's a kid that it's their reason they're tardy or late or to class or skipping or not coming to school. They go in past, hopefully that past teacher can have those conversations and you can always get to a root cause through some of those conversations. So I think May does give the flexibility and it does give some autonomy for those situations that you're speaking about, if it is the parent. You know, maybe there's a shared car situation. I've dealt with that before, dad worked at night and the car didn't get home, you know, until right before. So you do have a kid running in. So I think by May gives them some flexibility to work with families. But I will do as you all say. Are we all hearts and minds satisfied with that one?
What they say in the church, amen.
Okay, I am on page four, I think now, okay. The next item is other serious misconduct, that is a local code. And the reason we brought this change in, again, because we were getting conversations with administrators, looking at this local code, that some of the pieces didn't quite answer some of their questions when they were calling and they need some assistance. And then we looked at the Cessar code that's on the other side of this. Some incidents may not rise to the level of a Cessar. So we needed to make some revisions to this local code to give some more clarity, again, around some of these offense codes in the Code of Conduct. So that's where this minor change came from. And then theft of a minor nature. Due to the change in the board rule back in January, we had to then revise our definition to be the lower level definition of the one in the board rule. So that comes from a change from statute, the same as vandalism of a minor nature. Again, when you have the Cessar definition changes, you have to then amend your lower level code, that's the companion to that. So that's where those changes coming as well. So it's just the lesser of, I'm getting ready to rhyme and not trying to, the lesser of the Cessar. Somebody knew I was where it was going.
So other serious misconduct is what's going to have all these shooting threats we get on Snapchat or whatever else, or what the incident reports we see is XYZ student was overheard saying he's going to shoot up the school, whatever else, that's a Level Two violation?
I won't say that particular code will lend itself to it. It says, any active serious incident result the need for additional staff and administrators' intervention. So I will say it depends.
Okay.
A lot of these are situational. And it depends what is the outcome of that situation. So there are codes, and I could be jumping off around here a little bit, but there is a code for if I do make those threats and it causes kids to stay home from school, or it causes evacuations, or it causes any kind of disruption to the day, that would be a higher level code. But if I did maybe post something and then it caused an investigation, then administrator may could use this, but again, it's all about what did the incident cause? So that's where a code like other serious misconduct would come in. And it gives, again, it's all based on the investigation and the incident and what happened. And I think I was at technology, technology violation minor. We had a lot of administrators thinking this violation was for cell phones, but we have a wireless communication device offense code, which is cellphone. Technology really is about the district's owned technology. It's not about the student's phone, that's a wireless communication device. So this was just to clarify the actual technology that the student was used, for lack of a better words. I was using the computer, I was using a district-operated Chromebook or whatever. So that really why we needed to clean that definition up, so that everybody understood it was about the district's device versus the student's device. And that's why we referenced the electric communications use policy there, because it goes back to the use of district devices.
So when we talk about it being inappropriate, like, what level of inappropriate is it? Like, if I'm on chess.com when I should have been paying attention to the math lesson, is that a Level Two offense, based on this?
Just thinking the same thing.
It could.
Okay.
It could. If the teacher is teaching and I'm over here doing something else on my district-operated device and it's inappropriate what I'm looking up, it's not on content, it's not related to helping me further my knowledge in the content or the instruction, that could be a Level Two. It's hard for me to say yes, because everything is so situational, but could it? Yes. And we, again, we don't want to report it as a Cessar, because it didn't cause that level, but I've used my technology in an appropriate manner. I'm playing chess, shopping, or I've found a way to get on my social media.
What if Molly and I are over here playing tic-tac-toe on paper? That's not going to be a Level Two offense, right? Like, if we're just passing back X, O, and I win, or I don't know.
Again, I would say
Why you gotta win?
It's a hypothetical.
She was in trouble a lot lately. She was going down to New York.
We're coming at her today.
Really hypothetical. You know? But like, because it took place on technology versus paper, I'm wondering the difference there, I guess.
Well, because we have a technology major, that's why you have a technology minor. That's kind of where that companion comes in again. You have a technology major, which is I use my district-operated device and I've caused a major situation. I can give you an example. We had a kid who used a district computer and changed everybody's grades.
That's kind of major.
It's major. So the lower would be, what's the lower official non-Cessar of that would be a technology minor. So this is, we had the language in the code, but it was, you see how generic it was? Using technology in a manner that is inappropriate, but is not harmful or destructive. So trying to add some clarity around it was the intent, but if we don't think this does it, we can go back and take another look.
What are they, what are they using the Cessar, the reporting for? Is that going to?
They're getting here.
What is, what are they going to use the reporting for? What are they going to?
The Cessar data.
The data from Cessar.
We've got a kid that changes grades and we've got to report that to Cessar. How is that going to come back?
That's what I was going to ask. Okay. It's added to so much. I was just curious. It must be reported, so what is this measure going to come out as, is what my question is, so we don't have any?
Well, because the state says you have, these are incidents that you shall report certain ways. By statute, we have to do what they say do and report those incidents the way we are told to report them. So that's my little answer on that.
Good answer.
Oh, the next item is trespassing minor, and I'm on top of page five. I feel like I got cut off for some reason up there.
Real quick, Sabrina, I'm sorry. On the previous page on the disruption on campus major, is that probably where my scenario would fall into with the intent of whatever the threat may or may not have been? I mean, it just says including bomb threats inciting a riot, false fire alarm, but what about all these other threats?
Are you on page five?
I'm on the bottom of page four, number 51, the behaviors range of corrective strategies and disciplinary intervention. We just took some language out of that one.
He's too ahead of you right now.
Oh, he's ahead of me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's four on my side.
She said five.
She's got different page numbers.
Got it, okay. Sorry, you're good.
I was like, what is happening?
I was with you. So you know, like, he's right here.
Okay, but I will get there.
You're good.
Okay. So again, another change to Cessar definitions back in January was trespassing. And the recommendation was to have a local lower level code, which is called trespassing minor. So I know, we have to have, they want you to have a lower companion to almost everything. So that is what this definition here is to represent, is that lower level to trespassing. This is an incident where a student has not been noticed on a trespass, and then you would have to, you know, take them through the levels of being addressed in a trespassing fashion. So that is our attempt to do what we have been asked to do by the state with a lower level code for trespassing.
I'm sorry, can you have a trespassing without being told?
So, so let's just, for example, let's just say I leave Taveri's High School and I'm a student, and then I end up at Eustace High School. I haven't been told, so this would be like the warning level of that is the lower level. So it's your first notice, that would be the minor, right? But if I'm a student who's on a suspension, I have been noticed because my suspension notice clearly says you are not to be at any late count
Gotcha.
Okay. And then that would be the Cessar.
Okay.
Trust me, it took us a minute too. We were like, how do we even build this?
Now, what if that first one resulted in arrest, then you're, you still have that latitude.
So the arrest is, that's on law enforcement?
Yep.
So it's a little bit separate than us, but Mr. Mabry, we've worked with him on this, so he's going to be talking to our law enforcement agencies that work on our schools to know now, we have this new, new thing here now, and how to work through that. So he, he has created like a document that he's working on to share out. So that came up as well. So what if law enforcement arrests the student?
You didn't get a warning, you didn't get your arrest.
You know, they get a warning, but again, the goal is to help them understand some of these new legislative pieces that may impact their work as well, and to try to build that collaboration, to help them understand that we've been told this is what we, we need to create and to utilize. So that's where, that's coming from. Making us smarter, I think, I guess, I don't know, just testing our brains on all this new stuff. The next one is careless and malicious action, and we just added a few words there, or could cause harm. We talked about damage to property, but we didn't talk about causing harm to an individual. So we, we talked about results in injury, but not causing harm. So we added that piece. That was some feedback that we got from the committee. So I think I'm where you are, Mr. Brandenburg?
We are, yes.
About the disruption on campus. So disruption is a very, very broad category from Cessar. So this, back to your point, if I did any of those things and it disrupted, caused a total disruption in the school, that's what you might see that definition use. But also, it depends on the incident, because there's another definition in Level Four that might, you might see as well, depending on what the student said or did. But you could see disruption on campus.
And I could be getting ahead of myself again and over serve the right to be wrong, but it's just a matter of major disruptions, including a bomb threat, yada, yada, yada. But we don't specifically mention gun threats, which I would imagine are more prevalent than a bomb threat anymore. So it's just interesting that that's one cited and not the other, but that could be cited another one.
Right.
So, anyway, food for thought.
So again, that's the Cessar definition, and that's part, a lot of our problems is these are the state's definitions. And they are kind of what they, what they are, and we try to fit them where we need to fit them based on, on the incident. So that's, that comes with that. And then I talked about the technology minor earlier. Now here's the major, which is the Cessar, which goes back to the changing of the grades or putting a virus out there and then destructing some of our technology, our internet and those kinds of things, that would be major.
Ms. Sabrina, I don't know the, because I don't see it in here, the new statute that requires that we go back and address our cellphone policy. I know that that's, that's something that we have not had a lot, we, I know the Student Advisory Group had lots of conversation about cell phones and looking at a more restrictive policy. Now it's actually in statute, and so that's something, this will have to come back at some point to address those technology changes.
Let me make the notes.
And I know that that goes into effect in July, so we'll have to
So that has been approved.
The one where the teachers may designate a location for the cellphone?
Yes, yes. Cell phones are prohibited from use during instructional time unless authorized by the teacher to be in use. So that would
I think that's already in the code.
But I think the idea of them being able to maintain or designate a location.
That might be the new part, the location.
Yeah, there was some, there's definitely some
Here's the basket.
Right. Okay, so I'll take a look at that to see how much it impacts the language we already have, because we already have in there where the teacher can give discretion when utilizing the phone, if it's pertinent to like the class or the content, that language is in there, but the part about the designating a location, I don't think we have in there. So I'll go back, thank you. Sounds like another policy might be coming down.
Maybe there's some best practices that maybe guide, you know, even though the statute says one thing, here's the best practice around that.
Use that.
I don't know.
We'll take a look. Thank you for bringing that up, I wasn't fully aware of that. Tobacco, another minor Cessar change. And arson is not really a change, it's more of a clarification. And we wanted to add the language from the state in our definition that explains when something should be coded as arson. I think we looked at our data and was like, wait, see what's some arson's here, what's going on? And that piece we think is important, because it talks about a serious incident when damage is, is present. So if no damage, you would not code something as arson. But again, we had to go back and do some digging at the state and look in some documents and found that, oh, it might have been important if we added that little example years ago, we just, it wasn't readily available in the definition, but we had to go dig. And we thought that was important, because we don't want to be reporting arson's to the state if they're truly not arson's on our campus, right? We don't want that on, on our data. So that's where that cleanup came from. And then the next is biological, chemical attack or threats. Because these incidents are reported as disruption, so if you were to look at this, don't, you won't see this in reporting, you'll see disruption. We wanted schools to understand that it has to meet the elements of disruption before you use this code. Now, we had reported as disruption for I don't know how many years, but we believe putting it right in, in the middle of the definition will help schools make the connection that, oh, it has to be a disruption for me to use this code. So again, it's just clarification, it's always been there, but just hopefully putting it in the middle of the definition will help them. And same thing with bomb threats and explosives.
Even though bomb threats is under Level Three, is it now all under Level Four or the zero tolerance, or, because they use that language specifically?
It's zero, this is zero tolerance.
So then, and I know this is not you guys, but then why is it still disruption on campus would be a Level Three offense, including bomb threats?
When you look, when you look at this, then that's the confusing part for us, where you have to go look in the statute that talks about what, what is zero tolerance, these items are there, but the reporting as is Cessar. So you got, you got statute that's not Cessar, you got, right? So when you go look at, it is so confusing.
It still gives you Cessar on that Level Three offense on the previous page that we talked about.
So the disruption itself is a Level Three. But if it involves these pieces, the biological, the bomb threat, the explosive, that now ramps it up to zero tolerance, but it's reported as the state to, as a disruption. I can't explain it.
That's a good explanation.
It doesn't make sense to me, but it's one of those things, you have to keep looking at something else, something else to something else to find the answer. And then the same thing with false reports.
That's what answered my question before, it's all there.
Same there. And that goes to your, yes, your earlier question about the firearms. That's, that's there. And then fireworks, same thing, again, just trying to get our reporting as clean and accurate as possible. So if adding a few words will do it, that's kind of where we were trying to go. And then I am now on the last page, and that just shows the additional updates from the state, and these are the definitions that will be impacted, and it's how we will have to report these incidents to law enforcement, so.
Ms. Banks, I'm sorry, I have one more.
Oh, sure.
And then I promise I'll be quiet.
No, 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 you're
But on, on the fireworks major, they changed that one from a zero tolerance to a Level Four.
Level Four.
And that's the only one that appears to be a Level Four, all the other ones are zero tolerance. How did that work?
Because we caught that last year.
Yeah.
And we were like, oh.
But I guess what's the difference between a zero tolerance and a Level Four?
If you looked at the state, there isn't a difference. Because they, they clump them together, but then they have an asterisk and says these incidents are zero tolerance, but they clump them in Level Four. So we break them out so that our people understand Level Fours are not required expulsions. They are made expulsions, where zero tolerance are required expulsions. And the reason we moved that one to Level Four, because when we went back and looked at it, when they used to be clumped together, inadvertently left one in that clumped-up area when it should have been moved to Level Four. So that's where that came from. We read this book every year, and I think I'm only going to have one page of revisions, but then you get new fresh eyes like Mr. Sellis, and he's like, what about this? So it's like, oh yeah, I missed that. That's where this came from. Any questions other than some of the homework you all have given me to research and have ready before tentative approval?
Well, I checked on the, there was no, no bill that made it out of session this Well, I checked on the, there was no, no bill that made it out of session this year that affected 1001, 1,003.21. So on the first question, for Senate Bill 992, House Bill 961 also died. There was nothing else that affected that statute.
So, so it's gone.
Sixteen is sixteen, yeah.
It's dead.
From the other one, Sabrina's House Bill 379 says establish classroom rules, including designating an area for wireless communication devices during instructional time. And we know that that could be a backpack, a purse, it doesn't have to be a basket at the front of the room, so that the student still has access to the phone in the front of emergency. If it's in a purse, a pocket, just cannot be out. And we have to determine where that location is going to be, what we're going to allow and not allow in terms of a location according to the House.
Thank you for that. I'll go look that up. And thank you for clarifying about the second one. I will take that off. Any other? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last, but not least.
Oh, maybe we've already used up all our good questions. Maybe, maybe we still have some stumpers left. All right. Student progression plan.
Okay, so like they said, well, first of all, good afternoon now, we're not morning anymore. Thank you for giving me a moment to kind of go over some changes. Like they said, every year we read this and every year I find stuff, I'm like, how did I not find that before? So you'll see a few incidents of that this year, in addition to the typical changes that we have. So as you know, this is statute that we use to develop our student progression plan, it is required. This is our committee that comes together, that reviews this, that helps me find all the different pieces that we need to change each year. And then, as always, throughout the document, you'll see novice substitute edits, links to handbooks have been updated. We've changed or clarified language, deleted language. We've updated the statewide assessment concordance score pages, that's always done. It doesn't typically make it to the revision, but you can see those changes. And then the appendices also reflect the changes within the document, so it all kind of goes together. This year, some overall changes that you'll see throughout the document, that some made it to my revision guide, some did not. I'm going to be honest, I caught some of those yesterday. The change in title of one of our departments, the Choice and Alternative Education Department. The use of, instead of human growth and development, statute has changed that to reproductive health and disease prevention education. So that is throughout the document over and over, every time that was mentioned. House Bill One snuck in the deletion of the online requirement for graduation. I almost didn't catch that.
Is that grandfathered? Is that for any high school student?
It's not cohort specific.
That helps. Thanks.
So far, I'm waiting for some specific information on that, but House Bill One just says it has deleted the requirement for online, the online requirement for graduation. It didn't say beginning with ninth grades entering twenty-three, twenty-four. There's no cohort on that that I saw, but again, I'm waiting for that final doc to come from the state. And we've added the half of the, half credit financial literacy that is now required for graduation, and then.
Is that one cohort specific?
Yes. Starts with twenty-three, twenty-four. Ninth graders. And then the Florida standards, every year we kind of change up a little bit. So you can see we've changed it to current state standard, state standard. So we're trying to keep it uniform, but in some places it says current state as opposed to Florida state or state. So it all means the same thing. But we've got a little bit of language changes on some of those. So you'll see those repeated. So if we get into my change summary doc, I think he's going to pull that up for me. Yay. Okay. And then you have it in front of you as well. So the first big change, and it's not, and this is not statute driven, this is kind of need driven, because every single year, we get a handful of foreign exchange student requests at different schools, from different companies, with all sorts of different things. And we didn't have anything specifically in writing that helped us or the schools process that and know what to do. So every time I was getting phone calls, Dr. Langer was getting phone calls, and Dr. Langer, I would go like, wait, what do we do now? Like, every single time, we were kind of like going back to the drawing board to make sure that we were doing the right thing. So we put it in the student progression plan, there was already a tiny little blurb in there, and we just got specific, just to help our schools and our departments and people who are looking to place student, foreign exchange students within our district. This also gives them a place to go and see what, what is required. So that'll be a little bit of a training piece with our schools, but I think it will help us in the big overall picture of being consistent and having a process that we can, we can point to.
But you've got to be at least sixteen.
Yeah. And that is the C-I-S-E-T, C-S-I-E-T. That's their organization, that's how they typically work that. So then the next, page eight of the actual document, that's page two of this, is just, again, back to the Code of Conduct, they had several different pieces that changed there. Some of that overlaps in here, so this is just a language cleanup of that physical attack versus simple battery, just a language change in, in their statute, in their code. So we made that change over here as well. The next change is a statute change talking about when you have to have that physical health exam prior to enrollment in school. So that language comes straight from statute, and actually, our Neola policy says it this way that we have proposed in here as well. So now all of our documents match on that front as well. Oh my gosh, I can't turn my page. Okay. The next one we already talked about is an overall, the reproductive health and disease prevention versus human growth and development. You'll see that repeated throughout, I just highlighted one of them for you. And then we get to our first kind of grading piece. And so if you look, it's in the middle of page thirty-one in your actual document, it's, I didn't number these pages. It's in the elementary school progression, this will repeat all three times. So in elementary, middle, and high, this, this piece will repeat. So back to every year I find something in there, I'm like, how did we not find that before? A, in the elementary section, that all earned grades will be recorded after teacher discretion is used. We found that to be contradictory to the whole other part of we will and must allow redos and retakes of certain pieces of our, of our, of our coursework. So after kind of talking through that, we realized we, we could take that out. There's other places that allow teachers to have some autonomy with their grading, but that was in direct conflict with our whole other paragraph that we keep tweaking every year about our redos and retakes and doing what's best for kids. So that's why that is deleted. Then immediately under that on-year review summary, you can see the language, that number five that always comes in our grading piece that we've, every single year, we've kind of tweaked that language a little bit to get to a point as we try to account for like every scenario, which is impossible, but keep it broad enough so that we protect teachers and students. So in green, we've added this year that a retake of an assignment or an assessment must be in the same standard or content. However, it does not have to be the exact format as the original, nor does it have to include the entire task if mastery has been demonstrated on a portion of the task. So I think Mr. Felton spoke to this a little bit. There could be a time where a student master in the essential standards that they have on an assessment, that they really kind of did, they showed mastery on a portion of those standards, but there are others. The teacher wouldn't have to give the exact whole test back to the student if that was what the teacher decided to do. The teacher could give that whole exact assessment back to the student. But this just kind of gives a little bit of flexibility on the type of assignment, doesn't have to be the same. The assessment doesn't have to be exactly the same, and the, the content should still be the essential standards, the content shouldn't change. But in terms of which pieces that a student might retake or redo based on what they did master maybe the first time or not. So again, you'll see that repeated in all three sections.
So with, with the insertion of that sentence, I, I know we've got in parentheses at the end, this statement may not apply with Code of Conduct violations, Code of Student Conduct violations. Obviously, that, the statement we're referring to is not just the sentence preceding that.
Maybe you should say, yeah.
So I'm, I'm wondering how we, you know, capture the idea that.
That this whole.
The whole section doesn't apply, it may not apply with Code of Conduct violations.
I understand what you're saying. Okay, let me think about how, instead of statement, it might be this, this bullet point, this number five.
Number five.
Because really, that's what we're talking about, right? As opposed to.
We're talking all of number five, right?
The whole statement above. Okay, I can fix that.
I don't know if there's a.
I'll think of, I'll get a wordsmither to help me make that sound better.
I get the concept, but somebody will be like, no, 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 they got a Code of Conduct violation. So, so it just means it has to be now in the same form, and they're going to do the whole thing.
Right.
No, that's not what we're going for.
Got it, got it. I'll make sure that we get that to a point where it doesn't interrupt and do the opposite of what we intend. Okay, so.
I pointed to you when I said Code of Conduct violation, too.
I, I know that.
It's kind of him I've picked on you once.
I appreciate you, Mr. Blumberg.
I'm so happy.
We're going to have to put her on pass. I've spent a long morning, I'm sorry. All right, so the next big section is, again, verbatim from our technical assistance paper on third grade promotion and/or retention. So it was cleaner just to completely strike out what was before and put in the, the new language. So, and this is with Just Read Florida. So our, our processes and procedures have to match Just Read Florida, which also then match our reading plan, which will be coming before you, I believe, at the next board reading, as well as all of this for tentative approval. So all of this is just straight out of the tab from Just Read Florida, these next couple of sections, which aligns to all the, the new assessments and standards. Which is a lot, so it gets us through several pages. Into the high school, no, we're still middle school, in the middle school section, I'm just talking about some, all middle school grade subjects have state and districts approved course outlines. Just clarifying that it's, our subjects have state, we have state standard guidelines. It's not just district standard guideline, again, as we find new stuff every year to update. And then you'll see the reproductive health and disease prevention. Again, did I do that one right? Yes, I did that one right. And then our grading language. So middle school is really repeated. Exactly.
Forty-three G, do you need LCS? You're referring to district everywhere else, but.
Yeah, like that's somebody else's notes, I'll do that. I don't know why we did that. Um, well, let me, let me read it. We probably don't need LCS, we can just say district. On page forty-nine, that is another change that I probably should have had on the first general one, the, the name of the access points, alternative academic achievement standards. So they just kind of changed up, as they, as they do, changed up the name of the different standards and assessments throughout the, throughout the years. So that's another one of those changes. The others are the continued, repeated reproductive health, and then the grading, except on page sixty-four, we have the addition of our IB pieces, which also made it into the assessment part, because that had to be added on to the end of that.
I didn't see IB added to the waiting table for grading.
It wa, oh, you know what?
On page seventy-four.
No, yes, I saw that in mine, but it didn't transfer into here. Let me add that. Yeah. I saw that my person did it, but we transfer things over to.
I figure it's probably going to be weighted the same as AP versus pre-AP, that kind of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. It will. So we'll make sure that I get that in there. And we have grades again, and then the, the, the last piece, Mrs. Lyford helped me with the ESE section, because when I first looked at it, I was like, oof, it looked like a lot of changes. So she summarized, it's primarily grammatical changes, and then the clarified for out-of-state transfer students who enroll in the summer, that we have to develop the IP before the school year starts. And that wasn't as clear before, so just put that language in to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. They've removed some redundant language, clarified the grading information related to students enrolled in their access courses, where previously said ESE courses. They added language noting the requirements for completing that determination when they needed an alternative assessment. Added language about the retention of students instructed on access points. Information about the distribution of diplomas, if a student decides to defer their graduation and what we might do with that diploma and how we then would distribute it after the fact. And then language about concor, conducting, excuse me, an IP meeting prior to students' request to terminate school enrollment. So just some clarifying pieces in there. It was a lot of yellow, red, and green to pull over, and so I asked for a summary to make it a little bit easier.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the students that enroll during the summer, and the IEP has to be developed prior to the first day of school. I'm just curious, who's going to do that? Are you?
What if it's the day before the first day of school?
I mean, I understand the need to have it, but I'm just wondering.
Is it okay for me to respond from back here?
They probably want you to pick up on the microphone.
Typically, those meetings can be held during pre-planning, but we do have a team at the district office prepared to assist because we can convene a legal IEP team with staff that we have in our department if we need to support schools, because some schools get large numbers of out-of-state transfers, and others may just get one per year, but we're prepared to support as needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I do have one other question.
Yeah, go for it.
Maybe I'm brain dead, because all these people. But on the very first page, on the eligibility requirements, it says be at least fifteen, but then down in the green print, it says be at least sixteen. So is that a conflict?
Let me, I'll, I'll figure out which is the one we actually want to do. It is a conflict.
Okay.
Fifteen or sixteen, we need to pick.
Other questions?
No.
No.
I, I do have some other questions.
Okay.
Not necessarily specific to the ones here, but just as I'm reading through, I was wondering, okay, and, and I don't, I don't necessarily advocate for a change on this one, but I wonder if this is one of those best practices out there, because recess is addressed in our student progression plan, right? But I'm wondering if it defeats the purpose of recess if it's the last twenty minutes of the school day. Like, I, I thought it was kind of designed to be like a brain break, if you will. But I do know that there are schools that are making the last twenty minutes of the day, which case you're just really essentially just missing early.
Right, yeah, so I don't know if the student, the student progression plan doesn't address timeframes, I don't think, for any of its scheduled courses?
Aside from the twenty, aside from saying that it's twenty minutes a day.
Required, but it doesn't say when.
Right, it doesn't say when, and so I don't know that we need to legislate down to that point there, but like best practice, if it's the last twenty minutes of the day, it really kind of defeated the purpose. Right? Or the first twenty minutes of the day, once again, defeats the purpose, you know, that I, I think by design it was supposed to be like some sort of. So I don't think that's a progression plan, but it is mentioned in here. And then kind of a question related to PE. Do we notify parents that they have options to waive PE before we schedule the kids for it?
I can find out. I'm not sure, because that would be middle school. We do have a, wait, no, we don't. A letter, but it's not, probably doesn't go out before.
So the statute, so, so there's a statute that says we have to tell them beforehand, which I thought is a surprise. Because before, it's, it's kind of been, I guess, more reactive when, you know, I've had a kid who wants to take two band classes, for example. Oh, here's a form, you need to acknowledge that, hey, you're waiving PE. But the statute says that each school district shall notify the student's parent of the options available under subsection four, you know, the different exemptions, before scheduling the student to participate in physical education. And in this section, I, I think, I, I think that statute also refers to K-five, which really got me wondering, because like, okay, you, as a parent, I guess you may have an option to waive it, but really, it's not an option from the school's scheduling standpoint, because we have nowhere else for your kid to go than PE, because you can't just, you know, that's, that's the elective today. So, you know, I, I don't know how, how that meshes, meshes up with statute, but.
And that's one, zero, zero, three point four, five, five, right? That's the one you.
That's exactly the one. Well done.
It's for you.
Oh, okay.
Not that good.
And then, and then my other question, just about options for, for students. Fifty-three, we referenced that all students have an opportunity to work with school personnel to essentially develop some sort of educational plan.
Yes.
This, this educational plan, is, is this like, when I stepped into high school, they, somebody sat down and said, hey, let's kind of do a rough draft of your four-year plan to make sure you get all the classes you want, or to make sure that you're there in a logical progression, or so on and so forth. Is, is that what that is?
So I think that references two things. Required instruction in eighth grade is career planning. The state's always provided us with a platform for that. It used to be My Career Shines. Now we have a new one called Zillow with an X, always goes Zillow. X-C-L-L-O, not like Zillow, the real estate. So that is our new platform, which we'll be implementing next year. And so the students in eighth grade, so ideally, in a perfect world, in eighth grade, they go through that plan, look at kind of career options, and like, what does that look like as a four-year plan in high school? And then that should be revisited as students are in high school.
Okay, yeah.
So it could be multiple, multiple things. But our school counselors ideally are working with students on that four-year high school plan to make sure that they hit those twenty-four, eighteen required credits to graduate, plus whatever careers and post-secondary interests they have.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess I'm not sure to what extent all students are really getting that level of access and planning out their schedule. You know, it's a lot of, here's the curriculum guide.
Right.
Okay.
Pick some classes.
Wait a second here. Let me make sure the classes I'm randomly picking are going to, that they're all going to work sequentially based on, you know, what I, what I want to do or, or study. And then, then my other stumbling across in here was on page seventy-eight. There's some language about valedictorian and salutatorian, which I thought was timely, given all these, these graduations we recently had. And I was almost having flashbacks to two thousand and fourteen. I think this was one of our very first topics we, we discussed here, because I guess, I guess, schools may designate a valedictorian.
Yes.
Do all schools do that, or are there some that do?
Some do not. Some do not. They do, and we put the language in last year that.
Class rank or something?
Did the, the honors.
Right, right. So we've got the language in there about what Latin level of honors you will receive based on your GPA, to make that consistent.
We made that consistent, but all schools do not, all schools do valedictorian.
So then the question that was brought forth to me from a parent of a student said, okay, so if my kid would, because their class rank would be one, they would qualify for some valedictorian scholarships at various schools, but they can't list that as, as an honor, because the school's not designating them as valedictorian.
They can say they're ranked number one.
So, but they can't say they're the valedictorian.
But class rank of one, I think, if that's highlighted.
So that's my question, can they say they're the valedictorian if the school, then they say, hey, school is so-and-so the valed, nope, they're not, we don't designate valedictorians, but I'm number one, so is that their quadrant?
I haven't had that come up yet of our, I have not had that come up yet. So I don't know, if you're ranked number one, I don't know that schools are looking for the word valedictorian if they're looking at class rank.
I don't, that's, that's my question.
That would be the question. And so I think class rank is on transcript, valedictorian, salutatorian is not on your transcript, just your class rank. Summa, the honors is not on your transcript, it's just class rank in your GPA. So I, I feel like it probably isn't an issue, because that's not listed on any of the Florida faster transcripts that colleges get.
Okay, so they were so claimed.
Yes.
Because they're number one.
Yes, I ranked number one in my class. Yes, I ranked number one in my class.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we'd be okay on that, and I, in, I don't know, the, however many years I've been, like, in the secondary ed kind of role, dealing with all of that, I haven't had that actually come up. So I think the class rank piece satisfies that for those students.
All right.
I'll look into the, the PE and the recess pieces to see if that's anything that should be added.
All right.
Anything else?
Those are my questions. Did you all think of more as I was?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Board, for hanging in there into the, into the afternoon here. We made up the time in the air, right? All right, Board member comments, I guess we'll go to the line. Tyler, you have anything?
Nothing really. Did get the opportunity to attend our last graduation last week with Superintendent